It's September the 25th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. We do have a quorum and I'll call the With County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We have Mr. Pastor Jim Tenell of Baker's Chapel, Pentecostal Hall in this church to do our invocation, but everyone please stand and remain standing for our pledge.
Chairman Reese, thank you. Mr. Power hits for prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for you to grant guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to nurture the bonds of community, fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the communities in With County, and continue to remind us all that we're here today and everything that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone this morning. I will move right into our agenda with citizens' time. Ms. Myers?
Yes, good morning. In regard to government's job, it's not your responsibility to protect everyone from everything. In regard to radon, I have made a little survey of residents from Roar Tree to Ivanhoe, and the general consensus is that we do not need any more new ordinances, rules, and regulations. A palm card brochure with information and links can be given out by, with a building permit, leaving the responsibility to the property owner to do as they see fit. We don't need more rules, regulations, inspections, and fees in our lives. Please do not pursue radar ordinances. Just do a directive and get yourself a brochure that can be handed out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Ms. Myers was the only one that had signed up for citizen time. Would you like for anyone else to speak during citizen time to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman, just before you move on, Mr. Barrett, what we passed was not a fee that goes to the county, correct?
That is correct.
That was my understanding.
The $50 to $300 that I believe that Mr. Sprager talked about was the anticipated cost for new construction to remediate the radon.
Yeah, it's not a fee. Nothing else? Yes, Mr. Barrett?
I just looked up and I guess before we move on, it would be a good opportunity for us to introduce our new DSS chairman unless you were planning on doing that later, or DSS director.
I'll let you go ahead, Mr. Barrett.
Ms. Kim Ayers is with us. Glad to have you. You're welcome to step four, Kim. For those of you who have not met, she is our new Department of Social Services Director, and I'm glad to have her on board.
Kim, you want to come up and say a few words?
Well, I see familiar faces, so it feels really good to be back in With County. I've been in Bland as director for the last eight years. Prior to that, I was with With County School Board and With County Department of Social Services. So I've been in this area since 1994, and it feels really good to be back. Very excited, got a lot going on next door, getting ready for Santa shop and getting ready for some of the holiday events that we try to put forth for our foster kids and the other kids in the community, and we appreciate everybody's support.
You're welcome back.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you. Like I said, it's been very, very good to be back. And please come by and see me. My door is always open to any of you. I'd love to hear thoughts and concerns and any input that you have to provide to me.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Thank you for coming back to With County and applying for the job. I know I'm on the DSS board, and we have a meeting in the morning at 8:30.
At 1:00.
At 1:00, okay. I am lost.
You'll show up early.
I'll show up early tomorrow.
You may come whatever time you want.
But I didn't know we had a meeting tomorrow, so, but I thought it was 8:30, but 1:00, okay.
Well, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I have something I would like to say.
Okay.
I have, I had to look at it right hard, but I have had some dealings with her when I was on the school board, and it worked out pretty good, but glad to have you aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, with nothing else, we'll move right on into our agenda. Payment of invoice, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Pay the invoice, any invoice any board member would like to pull out or discuss. Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Uh-uh.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item is minutes of our previous meeting, September 11th, 2018. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of a second. Any corrections or changes that need to be made to the minutes. Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Uh-uh.
Uh-uh.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is old business. With County Rescue Squad Board of Directors appointments. Mr. Barrett, you want to discuss our letter we've received?
Yes, Mr. President, I just, I put the letter in the package, just our latest appointee has indicated that he was not going to be able to serve on the With County Rescue Squad Board, so we do have a opening on that board for you all to be coming up with an individual to fill that position.
I know the board has received the letters. Any board member have anybody to appoint at this time? Here none, we'll carry it over to our next meeting, and hopefully we can come up with an appointee. Next item is proposed noise ordinance. You have a copy in your board package. Mr. Barrett, you want to summarize the changes that we made?
As you all well, we held the public hearing at the last meeting for this, for this ordinance. Received the public comment. As discussed at that meeting, the primary changes to this ordinance are the, creating the timeframe for the entire effectiveness of effective hours of the ordinance to basically be between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and adding the exceptions into the ordinance listed in item B or exemptions in item B were the primary changes on this.
Okay, first I'll entertain a motion to approve, adopt ordinance number 2018.1, noise ordinance of With County, Virginia.
So moved.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Mr. McCRoberts?
I have a couple of letters from my piece there for changing that ordinance from where it's written, and for that reason, I would have voted against that.
Any other discussion?
I can sort of agree with what your, his constituents are saying, I mean, about the hours, because if they happen to work nights and sleep during the day, that could be a problem.
Well, I think my problem with those letters, and I understand, but if, if we write the ordinance where there's a decimal limit, you know, what I may consider noise, my neighbor might not.
Right. I understand that.
And if we don't want to do a decimal, you know, a decimal reading and by the meters and all that, you know.
Mr. McCRoberts, is that what the concern was, was the hours?
Yes. These, I have never experienced that myself. Most of the time, the record making was raised with me, but evidently these people that do the next shoe are there, just get out and party whenever they want to. It goes 6:00 o'clock in the evening, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning or later, and I wouldn't want that in my door either.
I don't, I don't follow that. What, what, what did you just say? If they're doing it at night, they're covered by the ordinance, aren't they?
There is.
Not until 11:00.
This may be, not this may be, I want this one to be called me, and I probably one of the reasons that ordinance would fit in, because how they talked to this lady, they called on the phone, killed, threatened to kill her and everything else if she didn't shut her mouth. No, there's nobody in this county that should live in fear for their life.
I agree with you.
And for that reason, I, I would never vote for it, not for them, for them to party at 11:00. So if they party at 11:00, they're going to go to 3:00. Every time they just, they call the law, they got scanners they can use, when they call the law, they just quit, and then when the law leaves, they party again.
Any or, any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Ball, uh, Mr. Barrett, doesn't the language in the ordinance trigger it by At any time, the Sheriff's Department can respond if it's deemed a nuisance when they get there.
Well, no, the, the way this revision is written, the prohibited conduct is only between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.
But what, what is the paragraph about nuisance?
There's...
That just quotes the Code of Virginia.
Yeah, there's not really any, any paragraph specifically about nuisance.
So no noise would be covered, as Coy is saying, except during those prohibited hours. We've already exempted most everything that can go wrong. We've exempted lawn care and, and farm machinery and cows and bouding uppers and everything else, so really this ordinance would only be in place between 11:00 and 6:00.
Yeah.
One thing we haven't, is that we're the partying and drunk. When you go out on your back porch and somebody laying on your back porch is drunk, that don't know where he is, drugged up in the wrong house, no, that should never be.
Mr. Barrett, I don't have the old ordinance, the original, I mean, the one that's in effect now in front of me. Is the exemptions in it?
I am pulling it up now to go over those with you. The, the current noise ordinance, basically if you're looking at the new ordinance, sections one and two and most of three are the same, except it says it shall be unlawful for any person to. There is no timeframe in there. The only item that has a timeframe is underneath item four, it says to create plainly audible noises in residential areas between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. in connection with lawn care, leaf removal, gardening, tree maintenance or removal, or other landscaping, lawn, or timbering activities. So it's basically restricting those items to not being, happening or occurring between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00.
But is section B exemptions in, in that one?
No, there is not exemptions in that one, in this ordinance.
I have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Hale.
Mr. McCRoberts, is your, your problem is not with having an ordinance, it's with timelines.
Yeah.
Well, if I remember right, Mr. Ball, didn't that something the Sheriff's Department wanted clarification on times? How did we get into this redo?
I, I don't know where the times came in. My, the problem I had with it was people using it to harass neighbors by calling in anonymously, and the gunfire, you know, before in the old ordinance, if somebody was shooting on their property and their neighbor didn't like it, even though it was in the middle of the day, they'd call in and complain, and they'd be in violation the way it was written. I'm not sure where the time comes from. I wasn't on the committee.
That, that is where the time came in. I believe what we discussed was because of all of those calls, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a little bit, but because of all of the calls to the sheriff's office regarding a dog bark and someone shooting, everything along those lines, we felt that we needed to look at the times between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., that those cannot be permitted.
And if I'm not mistaken, the town of Withville has time restraints on theirs. Does Roar Tree have? And, and the town of Roar Tree has times on theirs as well.
We weren't sure exactly how to, how to word that to where, we don't want it happening all night, but...
In this letter here, she says he starts sometimes at 8:00 a.m. in the morning and goes to 4:00, 5:00 o'clock the next morning.
Well, I'm kind of iffy on the times too, but I do think the exemptions need to be in the new ordinance.
Can we just remove the time?
Could, yes.
I mean, because my problem with it is, I mean, you've got so many people nowadays that work night shift or evening shift, and they sleep during the day, and I just, I can see where I'm at.
I mean, the complaints I had about it have been addressed. The complaints I had, that I received about it was not about any time. You know, the biggest one I had was, I had one neighbor that liked, I mean, it wasn't, really weren't even neighbors, had one person that liked another person, and they made 50, 60 anonymous calls to 911, and, you know, the, the one that was getting harassed had no civil remedy, because who does he sue for harassment if you're allowing them to call in anonymous?
Mr. Farnin, if we have a, another, a motion to remove the time, does that constitute we'd have to have another public hearing?
Yes, you'd have to set another public hearing, because you're making it more restrictive than what you advertised. You'd set another public hearing and remove the time for both ordinance.
But if we vote this down, the old ordinance stills in place.
That's correct.
It does not have a timeline.
That's right. The issue with the old ordinance is we're trying to get that agreed person to state their name and address.
No, we're trying to make it easier on the Sheriff's Department.
Correct. I don't know if it's easier on the Sheriff's Department to just make the person make a complaint, identify himself.
Well, it's not in the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance right now, correct.
Does, does the calls come in, doesn't have ID on them when they come in after you're making a nonstop on telephone today?
In 2018, it's pretty easy. I mean, there's apps that you can download on your phone, I mean, there's, and there's, you know, one big thing was that industry wasn't exempted in the old ordinance. So if we get a call on Gatorade, how's that going to go over?
And I got a call list from Darlene, I didn't bring it with me, because I wasn't prepared for that, but they, they're receiving calls pretty much nonstop. So maybe we just need to look at this ordinance altogether again.
I mean, I, I believe between the hours 11:00 and 6:00, you do need to be addressing what's in item number four, and that's where it originally was set up, because you were trying to keep those things from happening during those hours, and that's where it was originally, the timeframe was originally in.
But we brought this up three or four years ago. We went through this same thing. We chose not to use the scientific method of measuring sound. That's what Mr. Ball brought up. Unless you have some scientific method of measuring sound and distance, it's a judgment call whether it's a nuisance or not. You know, one person that can't hear very good, or a, a train is a better example. People that live near the railroad don't pay attention when a train goes by, but if you don't live near the railroad, it bothers you and you have to quit talking when the train goes by. So the level of noise that's an urgent, it either has to be a judgment call or a scientific measurement, and in the past, we've chosen not to use a scientific measurement.
Hold on.
You know, these two people voted for me. I'm going to return that vote. I'm not going to vote for that.
Okay, here no other, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
No.
No?
No.
Yes.
No.
And the chair votes no. Motion fails. I'd like, well, would like to send this back to committee. I think that the exemptions needed to be added to make it perfectly clear and work on this, and come back out of committee, we'll, we'll look at it and schedule another public hearing.
For clarification, the old ordinance still stands?
The old ordinance still stands.
Thank you.
Okay, next under old business, water rates. This did, this is coming back out of the Water Committee as a recommendation to approve. Coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, and I'll open the floor up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the, the committee recommended it be back on the agenda, not for adoption. Just a correction there.
Okay. Now, open up the floor for discussion.
Well, what rule here? What you said indicated to me you do need a motion. You said?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we just brought out a...
All the, all the Water Committee did was put it back on the agenda.
For discussion. And Mr. Barrett, I asked for some numbers. Do you have them to pass out?
Yes, I do, on the churches. Is that the numbers you're discussing?
Yes.
Yeah. One of the topics that came up, I'll just pass this around, was on the churches.
Commercial uses.
You can see from what's on there, there are 27 churches in the system. 21 of those are below the minimum usage or are flat water, meaning they are not actually connected, so they're just paying the minimum bill, so it's the same amount either way. Six of those are, well, four of those are just above 1,000 gallons. You have 1,000 gallons, 1420, 1172, and 1597, so very low usages. The next is a church property, but it's a rental property, so it has been used as a home for someone would be my guess on that, and the next one is a church and home both, and so that is why usage is high on it. So that just answered the question, it would, it would have, basically for most of the churches, the 10% increase would be the dollar and 89 cents on the 1890 right now, so it would go up to the $20.79.
So really, the only two that we'll see is, is lies to on the list.
Yep, and both of those appear to be homes.
Right now, we cannot borrow any more money from already held on water rates and all that.
We can borrow money. We are not eligible to get any grants towards our project. As an example, the individuals that, that came in here, and I'm, I'm just using rough numbers, that came in here and made a presentation on needing water right across from town of Withville here, just some back of the envelope estimates that, that staff has done, probably would cost us in debt service, it was over $1,000 a month for the 40-year loan in debt service. Payments coming back would be about $500 or so, so it only covered about 50% of it. And where that makes a difference, if, if you got, if we had to take it all out as loan, then, then we can't cover it. If you could get 50% loan and 50% grant, then you're at it that'd been a financially feasible option. And, and like I said, those are just back of the envelope numbers where we are, but the Speedwell project was a million dollar grant and 1.5 million dollar loan, is that correct? Two and a half million total, and that's what made that feasible, because we were grant eligible at, at that time. So there are several projects that we have, Ricky Rhodes, some that Mr. Hale's talked about, that are not going to be feasible unless we get to a situation of where we could be grant eligible.
But to be grant eligible, we've got to go up like 25 or 30%?
To be grant eligible, on the current calculations, you've got to go up, it's, it's probably somewhere in that range under the current calculations. Now, as Mr. Crisp and I have been discussing, the guidelines for those, whether Mr. Crisp is in here or not, but the, those guidelines can, can change as directors change in, in how those parameters are set up, but from where we are currently, yes.
To me, that's just crazy, that you've got to have a rate way up here in order to be grant eligible. You need, if you need the money, it's almost like going to the bank now. If you've got the money, you can borrow the money, but if you don't have the money, you can't.
But, and outside of the, the grant situation, I mean, the, the reason that's brought this up is just that the enterprise fund that the Water Department is currently running in a projected budget in the red, meaning that the revenues from the Water Department will not be covering the expenses of the Water Department, leaving the grant, loan, future project discussion out of it. You know, we budgeted this year about a $265,000 deficit in the Water Department, with most of that being the debt service on our, on our equipment.
And within three years, we'll have to be taking money out of the general fund pay.
Well, we're only discussing part of the equation. When we talk about raising the cost of water to the current customers by 25, 30%, is basically we're in the retail water business and we don't have enough customers to keep the lights on. We need more customers, so my discussion has always been, put the water where people will buy it, in these subdivisions where you pick up 60 or 70 customers for a nominal amount of money, which might, should have been done in the past as we were developing the system. So if we, if we add another 150 customers, that 25% gain comes down, the more people participate in paying these debts off, the less the number's got to be.
I agree.
And we've got a system that don't have enough customers.
The problem we've got is most of the places that need water, there's just a few people. It's not a high concentration of people.
No, in Eastern Inland County, we've identified three or four that would have a good payback. We don't have the ability to put water to them financially. Is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Well, I mean, the last, the ones that we've done PERs on, we have, they are not financially feasible, under the current rates of where we are and, and the cost it takes to run the water there.
Oh, but we have done PERs on the high density ones.
We, we do have some, some calculations on some high density ones, but that is all dependent on the number of individuals that would connect in those areas. We've got, there's very few areas, the low hanging fruit is gone, but we have very few areas where we could run water to at a low cost and, and pick up those customers.
One thing that the Water Committee discussed was paying the debt service, New River Regional Water Authority, out of the general fund, because that, I mean, they, they produce water, which does go to the water customers, but it also has the potential to bring in industries, because industries have to have water.
That will help, but it's still not, it's still, it's still not going to put us forward.
It's not going to put us where we're at, but it puts us a whole lot closer. It's not gonna put us where we're at, but it puts us a whole lot closer. How much would it help us?
Basically, our deficit's about 265,000. If we paid the county contributions towards the debt service from general funds, we would still end up with a deficit of about $95,000 in the operating funds.
There's one other thing about that. That new equipment that the water company's got, is it a shared bill between sewer and water, or is water picket all that?
Which equipment?
The debt service on equipment.
Don't really have any debt service on any equipment. Debt service is only on the lines and stuff like that. Like what, the wastewater plant and all that's over in Popper Camp, that's all wastewater expenses and expenditures on it.
But I'm talking about capital equipment or disposable equipment, like vehicles, backhoe, that stuff's all paid for?
All of that is pretty much paid for, just out of our operating funds in the past.
Okay.
See if I have any other questions pertaining to water rate adjustments as far as commercial and residential.
I still believe that the 10% is too much of an increase.
I understand, and it's especially difficult when you start talking numbers as 10%. I will just bring up, it's about $1.79 for the users of the, or the non-users and those at 1,000 gallons. The estimate for the 3,000-gallon user went up, I believe, about $3.79, $3.79 for the average user of the system. So I realize $3.79 is still $3.79, but that's what the 10% number would calculate out to a month.
That number also applies to the non-users, correct?
Correct, yep. The non-users would go from 1,890 to $20.79.
And that's where most of the real rub is. Most people that's got water understand they got pretty good bargain at buying water. If you're out of water, it's really important. Do you have any idea how many people are really non-users?
Yep.
It's around 400.
Around 400 people pay that fee and the water is their farm if they want it.
But they also get other services. I mean, fire protection, I mean, or fire hydrants there, I mean, that's got to count for something. I mean, you know, if the residents catch on fire, you know, we got county water there to assist putting it out, and it makes their insurance lower.
Yeah, there's an ISO requirement that, I don't know what the current one is, but it does supposedly reduce your insurance, casualty insurance thing.
I know, my one went down when they brought the water line through in front of the house and put a fire hydrant there.
Are we gonna deal with this with a motion to raise water rates? You had it on the agenda before. I wasn't here.
Well, if we're through with the discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to raise the water rates, what we had proposed before. I made the same motion the last time, and I made that motion because I have people on the floor, and they'll wait for me to get it through. We've got people right here in Withfield that need water, on the floor. And we can't do nothing for them. I make that motion.
And I have a second.
I'll second that for the same reason. If we can't expand the system to give water, safe water to people that need it, we ought to fix the problem.
Second, I would ask for Mr. McRoberts to confirm. We advertised a 10% increase for everyone, and then we came back and talked about a 10% increase on commercial and a 5% on residential.
I'm making a motion to do a 10% and a 5%.
Okay.
That's what the last was. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
No.
No. No.
No. No.
And the chair votes, motion fails. Board of three. Okay, next item. Anything else under old business? Mr. Bayer?
Mr. Chairman, I do not know of anything else under old business.
Okay, Treasury report. And the new business reports, not new business. Ms. Gwain, good morning.
Okay, in your board packet for this meeting, you had your August financial report. And in that report, you will notice that the consolidated account had a balance of And of that, the balance in the general fund was $31,66,530. And September, when you receive your report next month, we'll still, our revenues will probably stay about the same, but we're close to getting taxes out, so we'll start seeing that increase coming through, which I'll address more on taxes here in just a moment. I had sent a request to Mr. Bayer to be forwarded to all of you, requesting that the 2018 personal property tax relief rate be set at 39.59% for this year. And that is a decrease from the 2017 year of 1.46%. And I think you have a resolution in your packet to consider approving that.
For our new members, if you will, Mr. Chairman, I will comment. Basically, years ago, the state locked in the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. We get $1,500 and some odd numbers.
$186,000, I think, is the exact number.
That was locked in. And that was what the rate was, and that was when it was a 70% reimbursement rate. Every year, you have to calculate what that amount is that's coming from the state and what relief that goes on everyone's tax. So if you owed $100 on your car back when this first went into effect, and you got 70% off of it, you were paying the $30. Well, we're now at the point where we're no longer 70% off. It keeps dropping down, and we're at the 39, whatever number she said.
39.5.
That they calculate on the eligible vehicles.
And I'll add, if a vehicle's valued at less than $1,000, then that taxpayer receives full tax relief for that vehicle. Vehicles valued at $1,000 to $20,000, you receive the tax relief on that amount. Any vehicle over $20,000, so once your vehicle value hits $20,001, you pay the full tax rate on that value up to whatever amount your vehicle's been valued at. So the folks with the 2016, '17 vehicles, they're gonna pay a whole lot more tax than those that would have even an older vehicle, just because of the higher value. And sometime, of course, also depends on the type of vehicle as well. Not necessarily all the newer ones, but the big trucks, SUVs, things like that, you're gonna pay more tax for sure.
Okay, we'll take this up now. Just give me a minute. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-34.
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes, aye.
Okay, and currently, referring back to the 2018 taxes, Mrs. Barker and her staff have finished their work. The books were finished out on Friday. For my office, we're just waiting for IT to get everything transferred over to us. I feel like we would have about a week that we're gonna need to work on those as far as applying our prepayments, things that we need to do to get the tax bills ready. My goal has been and still is to have tax bills back to our taxpayers, back into the county by the middle of October. So we're, Ms. Barker's finished, I'm waiting. So that's kind of where we're at with that. But hopefully, we'll have those back in the coming weeks. And I was so excited about taxes, I did not ask if anybody had questions on the financial report, so I apologize. But did anybody have any questions?
I do. That print that we get is so hard and size-wise for me to follow, just a judgment call.
On the financial report?
Yeah. How are we compared to last year in September? Where are we? Are we even? Are we a little bit ahead?
I honestly did not look back. Mr. Hale, I was out of the office on Friday when Mr. Grant sent this in to me, and I looked at it very quickly yesterday afternoon. I have not compared it, but I will bring you a comparison back next month and compare it through the first quarter of the fiscal year compared to first quarter of last year. That'll bring us up through the end of September and kind of see where we are. But overall, we're in pretty good condition.
We need that for a reason. I'm for some debt reduction.
Right.
Pay off some debt. And that's the question right now, can we afford to pay off some debt?
Right.
We've got some interest rates that I think we should get rid of.
I'll take a look at that and look at a comparison for the first quarter and bring it back.
It's up to you to make the money available.
Well, not to the next meeting, but to the October meeting for September.
You know, that's your job. Make the money available so we can do this.
Well, I'm trying to do all I can to make money available. We're working very hard in our office to collect all we can. We've had good response with the collection methods we've been pursuing. So I'm doing everything I can to make sure that we're getting the money in. But there's some departments that I have no control over that need money that I can't do anything about. So anyway, neither here nor there. But any questions or comments?
Lori, on the personal property tax, the delinquent personal property, have you, did you see an increase in collection once we posted those amounts?
We have, a lot of those folks, we had stops on, so it was kind of hard to know entirely who was calling because they needed to renew their tags or who had seen their amount on there. Now, we had a lot of mothers that called because they saw their child's name on there. So they're calling to get the child cleared up. So that seemed to be a lot of calls that we noticed. But I think it did help because it generated interest. And I haven't checked with Mr. Coke to see what the, how many people accessed the website to see if that helped either. But I think it did help because it helped to get it out there as far as these are the folks that owe taxes, because our taxpayers are not used to that being put out there. They just know they have to pay that real estate by June 30th to stay out of the paper. And I think this gives us a whole nother mechanism to, you know, you don't mean it to be public embarrassment, but at the same time, we get the saying all the time, "I didn't know I owed that." But we all get that tax bill every year. We do know that we owe that.
Well, and I'm sure you've noticed with the warrants and debts, that people move a lot.
Oh, yeah, for sure. And we've finally, after six months, have gotten access to a program that I've been trying to get my credentials for, that's going to, I hope, help us with that. We've used it some to try to search for some folks, but it's one of those things, I need to work with the company to make sure that I am using it to its full capability, to try to locate folks. So we've used it recently, found some addresses for people where they'd moved to in just the last couple of months. So I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to better utilize that program and locate a lot of these folks that when civil division's going out for the sheriff's office, that you're not just making a trip out there and that person doesn't live there anymore, at least we can maybe get you to where they do live.
Do you happen to know what Montgomery County uses?
They go a little bit deeper than what we currently do right now. They do bank liens and wage liens.
I'm talking about to locate people.
Oh, to locate people. I'm not sure what they do. I talk to those folks all the time, but I've never asked them what they do to try to locate those folks because they...
You may check whatever system they have.
Pretty effective for them.
Because they've been sending stuff from 2013, and it's spot on.
Yeah.
They know where they live.
Well, and that's the year we've been targeting as well, trying to pick those up and come forward. And some folks, you look in DMV, you never get an accurate address because they never update anything there. But then some do move very frequently, and you find an address today and they're no longer there tomorrow. But I'll follow up with them and see what they use. I talk with them pretty often, but just never have asked that particular question. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will make one comment on the general fund. The change from the prior month was up $4.6 million, but most of that was from the $4,950,000 that we drew down from Carter Bank and Trust for the Apex project. So that money has come in, it's gone back into the account, and we have all of that on hand.
Thank you, Ms. Gwain.
Thank you.
Ms. Barker? Morning, Fay.
Morning. I have just preliminary figures on the difference between last year. I don't have a report done yet, but I just thought I would give you preliminary figures of what the difference is. On real estate, the dollar amount is $1,236,562 up from last year. On personal property, we're up $512,967.76. Just preliminary figures. We've had, we've had a time with getting our books. We are ready, we were ready, but we've had to get David a couple of times, just keep calling. I think in the next year, which will be my last year than anybody, I'll have to fool with it. But I think next year that David needs to be available to us for the month of September or a couple of weeks in September, and put everything else on the back burner so that we can get everything. Hopefully, we'll be able to do it on our own, but he needs to be there, because we don't have the codes or anything that, from Munus, that we can do it right now on our own, so...
What type of codes does David have that they don't have to run their own books?
Everything's not open to us.
I would have to ask him. I've already had discussions with him about this, and my comment to him was for next year, that all the work would be done at the Commissioner of Revenue's office, and they would be doing it, and he would be standing behind assisting them anywhere where they had to do it. Because our whole goal with this system was to get to where it was, it's the individual offices able to run all of the things. If there's code problems that come up, and there was problems that happened, something was out of range or whatever, and we had to send in a work order to Tyler Munus on one or two items to get them to make the corrections in the programming in order for it to work. But there's no reason that they should not have full access to it. And a lot of it is history under the old systems. It took David doing a lot of programming and putting with it, and that's the goal we're trying to get away from.
And when Munus, when David asks Munus to do something, it might take them two weeks to get back to us. And as much money as we're paying, the county is paying Munus, it shouldn't, they should get back to us just like that, if they have other counties, is the way I feel about it. But, so, and that puts us behind then, you know, when we... Anybody have any questions?
The figures you presented were assessed value, not taxable numbers.
No, but this is tax dollars.
Tax dollars. So that's, meaning that's the amount multiplied, that's the assessed value times the 54 cent rate is a million dollars. Okay.
Because the real estate went from...
Oh, that's including the new tax rate.
That's including the new tax rate.
That makes sense now. I'm with you. Okay. I'm with you. Okay.
And personal property, overall, is down a little bit because merchants' capital, I mean, we're up dollar-wise, but it could have been more. But last year, when Munis pulled over merchants' capital, yeah, merchants' capital, they taxed everybody twice. So we had to exonerate all of those. It brought everybody's merchants' capital, everybody that had merchants' capital, it brought it over twice. We had to exonerate those. So it looks a whole lot different than what it should be because I would think it would be up with all the new vehicles and everything. But because of that merchants' capital, overall, it's down on the merchants' capital, but overall, it's up on everything else, so... But when it carried it over twice last year on everybody's, and everybody was coming, everybody that had merchants' capital was coming in, hey, what's wrong? We're taxed twice on this. And we got to look, and the computer had pulled over everybody that had it twice, so...
Anybody have, Joe?
I've got a question. Mr. Barrett, this Munis system, does Treasurer's Office and Finance, are they having similar problems in response and glitches? And this thing's been around a long time, it ought to be running pretty smooth.
You do run into situations, and their help desk is, from what I have seen, has typically been very responsive. I'll be glad to go over the one she's mentioning. But you send things in by priority. I mean, if it's not a high priority item, you know, you have time. Taxes are high priority items. And those are items that they typically turn around quickly on to make certain we have. I don't know the timeframe on David, on the response these last weeks.
You just said two weeks, that's not much of a priority.
Yeah. Well, I know the situations, I talked with them last week, was resolved before the end of the week on taxes. But I'm not saying there's probably not some issues that are taking longer to respond.
But it's not as usable in our offices as in Finance or Treasurer's Office. That's the problem. Because we're still having to rely on the old system and the new system, is the reason...
How long do you project that's going to go on?
Um, I don't know.
The whole idea of spending all this money was to get away from the old system and consolidate one bookkeeping system.
Your old system, you're talking about the assessment system.
Yeah. And see, everything has to be pulled from the old system into Munis, and that's what causes some of the, that's what causes some of the delays because where it has to be pulled in.
But other systems, I mean, other commissioners having to do the same thing, run this system, is to pull that over from their system. It's not a, not a unique to us.
It's not, but it's just some things that are not, I don't exactly how to say, some things in the old system, when they go over into the new system, they don't go over correct. Munis won't pull them over correct, so... And it happens in all the counties. It's not just ours that has Munis, so...
But is it a program failure, or is it that they're just not compatible?
They're just not that compatible.
Conversion issues is what it is.
Conversion issues.
But that's a Munis problem, isn't it?
Well, it's, you've got to get it set up to where it is pulling the data off of the old system into it.
David told me in three years it would be, and see, this is our second year that we've used it.
Yeah.
And David's saying in three years, everything should be straightened down, but...
What happens? You get into, you've got base data, and then you're adding new data on top of it. And what David's talking about, we've got legacy records that we have to pull in off of the old system and with it. And as Fay enters new stuff into the new system, as you get away from using that legacy data and only using the data that you've entered throughout the year, that does away with a lot of your conversion issue problems.
But overall, Tyler Munis, it's working well, is what I hear from the schools and...
In the financial part, I think it does really well. But my problem is, and I know I'm not supposed to talk about it, but my problem is, I don't like using stuff that I don't know why I'm doing it. I can do it, but why am I doing it the way it has to be done? And I, you know, and everybody in my office is the same way. Why are we doing this this way? And nobody can answer it, so...
Well, I'm not a computer genius, but by no means, but, you know, when I download a new program or a new thing, it's, you know, I may have been doing it one way at some point in time, but now I'm going to have to learn how to do it a new way, and I've got to learn that.
And everybody in my office has learned to do it, but they don't know why they're doing it this way.
Because the program says that this is the way you have to do it.
Yeah. But I don't like to do stuff when I don't know why I'm doing it. But, you know, I'm doing it, but why is it doing it this, why are we doing it this way when it's a whole lot easier to do it another way? And, you know, that's...
Okay.
One more I.T., please.
Oh, okay.
Is our new hire being involved in things like this?
I don't know how much Caleb is actually helping them on this. Caleb is, David is more the programming, working on this. Caleb is taking care of the networking issues and the other issues from the other departments so David can be freed up to work more on these items and on the new training on the other.
But our intent was for Caleb to have a general understanding in case something happened to David.
He is getting all of that.
You're up that creek without either paddle.
He is getting all of that through his training. But I would not, at this point in time, turn Caleb loose working with a new system on them because David's got the years of experience of the old system with the legacy data and the new data that's going with it.
My question, is he being brought along?
He is, absolutely.
The problem is that David is only one person to...
Yep.
That's why we hired somebody to help him. That's what I just asked, is the new man being brought along to help David do his total job and not prioritize just one of one thing?
Okay. Next time, it's Sheriff, but I see Mr. Foster, Chief Foster, you want to come up?
I didn't have the debris collection readily accessible this morning. I think you have in your board package.
Yes.
So I have coordinated with Billy Bowers and the New River Valley Regional Jail on the October the 6th, tire take-back day. And I've got eight to 10 inmates arranged to come down and help with that. So after I spoke with Billy, that's quite an influx of tires that they give out, actually.
Chief, I just got one question. Why are we just getting two inmates from the regional jail for the trash pickup? I mean, I know we was getting three and four when we first started. Why did they cut it, is that just a jail?
I didn't know that. I think usually tends to that program, but I can find out why, yeah.
Have we just not requested, or the jail just don't?
Typically, anything that I request, they will please, so it's usually not a problem.
I think we can use more than, and get more done with more than two people.
Okay. I wasn't worried, but I'll find out one.
But that's, you know, we have the hours here and the weights and the number of inmates and miles that they covered. And all of last month, they just had two inmates on the days that they picked up trash.
All right. I've got another question. I've had two citizen complaints that people called the Sheriff's Department about trashy property and vehicles being moved, and they were told it wasn't anything they could do about it, is what the people tell me. One of them's in Max Metis. And then, when they went to Arlen, and Stephen, does Arlen work at Director of the Sheriff's Department or in ordinance compliance, does he work for you?
He works for us in ordinance compliance.
Okay. This citizen said that they told them there wasn't anything they could do. I explained the complaint procedure, and advised that he call here and make a formal complaint, and then see what happens. Maybe we need more attention to, those calls don't need to go to the Sheriff's Department, or if they do, the Sheriff's Department uses the standard procedure of how to make an ordinance complaint about trash.
Did mention.
Y'all are aware of that. And so just tell them, there's nothing we can do. Put them on the right track to get the ordinance to work for them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on the debris report, do we really need a copy of his daily time sheet?
No.
I mean, we've got 244 pages on our board pack, and I think the synopsis is fine. If anybody else wants it...
Well, this is the first time they've ever been put.
No, we've got it for the past couple.
Was it? I just, no, I did notice it this time, and I don't think we need all their time sheets.
I'll have to cease the forwarding of that.
The report of the hours and the dates and when he's working in the sheriff's office and when he's out on the road.
Just continue sending that up the way it is, and Ms. Collins and them will make certain they're just putting the summary sheet in the board package. That's all you all really need.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure who work come from, I just...
I'll take responsibility because I get the whole packet, and I just put on it, include in board package, but I've not been specific and says, "Just the cover sheet only." So we'll get just the cover sheet.
Please pass on to them. I really appreciate the job they're doing on the park and ride. That's the biggest eyesore we've got left. The report is, you drive around the county, you just see that they're doing a real good job of keeping trash up. But those park and ride things need on his schedule to just look at them because it seems like a lot of people clean their car out before they go home, and they are in strategic locations. So I appreciate their effort in keeping those clean.
Yes, sir.
You think it'd be worth putting some trash cans up there as a trial?
If we could get somebody to empty them.
Well, I mean, we've got the debris guys can go by and empty them.
About half the people will use a trash can if it's handy.
Some of the influx I see there at times, you may need a green box as opposed to a trash can.
Well, you know, in my opinion, if we put something like that up, it'd have to be 55-gallon metal barrels with, hooked to a post, or they would be gone. You'd have to put a cement a post in the ground and hook them to it in some way or...
Don't use them no parking post.
Has anybody got any questions, other questions for the chief?
Yeah. Are your guys helping monitor the no parking signs down there?
I've been a pair myself, sure have. So far, so good. I don't think we've had any more trouble with it.
No, and I've been, I go up there and look, and it's been clear I've not seen anybody parking in the road or where the signs is, and the signs are still there.
Everything looks good so far. It's always such a change, those big trucks going.
We just need to get moving with getting the drainage in and getting that fixed before we can get it turned over to VDOT, where they can take care of it. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, before you go into the committee reports and everything else, we've got a couple individuals here. If you all wouldn't mind changing the agenda up and going into new business, if that would be acceptable to the board?
Well, I will change it and let them come up and speak.
The first item you got, Mr. Chairman, under new business is the Mount Rogers Community Services Board Borrowing Obligation Resolution. That's page 150 of your package. Ms. Beamer?
Sarah, good morning.
Good morning. I think of additional items as well, additional support information. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning. I am Sarah Beamer, the Director of Finance and Administrative Services at Mount Rogers Community Services Board. And with me this morning is Sandy Bryant, our Executive Director. And we are here, in fact, this morning to request your approval regarding the line of credit. But I do want to give you a little context. I distributed it to you this morning, I think you have the resolution in your packet, but three items. The white page was a draft resolution that I sent to the county, and I think maybe it's now on your format. The green sheets are a few pages from our performance contract for fiscal 2019 that I'll reference. And the yellow page is our budget for fiscal 19. Smart business practice, of course, would be to have, you know, two to three months of operating reserves. And now, however, the department is actually mandating in our performance contract for the first time for fiscal 19, a specific number of months of reserves. I'll refer you first then to the green sheets, and these are, this is just an excerpt from our performance contract for fiscal 19, from Exhibit J. You'll see there on page 68 in the section Compliance with State Requirements. Flipping on over to page 70 in the Financial Management section, and then finally on to page 71, Item 12, that states, "If it is an operating community services board or behavioral health authority, the CSB shall maintain an operating reserve of funds sufficient to cover at least two months of personnel and operating expenses." You can see on the yellow sheet that our proposed, or our budget, as our board has approved for fiscal 19, totals roughly $61 million, of which about $5 million is regional monies that we hold or restricted for specific programs. So, you know, if you do the math, in order to meet the two-month reserve requirement, we would need to have roughly $10.2 million in cash. Now, I will report to you, and we reported to our board yesterday, that at the end of August, we had a total cash amount of $9.8 million, of which around $1.5 to $2 million related either to financings or more specifically to restricted regional monies, leaving us with $7.8 million in cash reserves. So the point is, we will need a line of credit most likely to meet this two-month requirement. The agency hasn't in the past had a line of credit, but we're now thinking that we probably need to have one as a safety net. Our hope would be that we would never need to borrow on it. But in order to meet this mandate, which is going to be calculated for the first time by the department sometime this fall, based on our fiscal 18 financial statement audit results, we need to move forward to put in place a line of credit. Now, the resolution in front of you suggests, and our board approved, an ultimate amount of up to $10 million. We don't know that we would go for a line of credit in that amount, probably closer to about $5 or $6 million, but we would like the capacity with growth, if needed, that we could go as high as $10 million. What I do specifically want to point out to you is, in your resolution, the last whereas is important, and I would be asking this question if I were in your chair. And let me read that last whereas. "Mount Rogers Community Services Board and the county understand and agree that no payments will be requested by Mount Rogers from the county in connection with any repayments of borrowings on the line of credit financing, and that the line of credit financing will not constitute a debt or pledge of the full faith and credit of the county and will not impose any liability on the county, nor is the requested authorization a guarantee of the line of credit financing on the part of the county." I point that out to assure you that there's no liability by the county, but state code requires that since we exist to serve our locales, that each locale approve our obtaining any debt, including a line of credit. So we're here before you today. We've already met with three of our localities, two more to go after today requesting your approval of this resolution. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Beamer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hale.
When you go after this line of credit, is it with commercial regional banks? Is that where you go for the line?
We are planning, you all may be familiar as a municipality, with FML VACO Group. We are going to utilize their services in putting the line of credit out for bids. They have assured us that, in fact, they will look at regional banks. We've had a preliminary conversation just to kind of get, you know, some idea of where we stand with one of our regional banks already. we stand with one of our regional banks already. But we're going to utilize VML VACO as our...
That was my next question. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any other questions? Here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any questions or comments? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you for your support.
Ms. Beamer?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before they leave, looking at the next item under new business, can you give us an update? Was there not some funding in the state budget for private transportation on the TDOs?
I can speak to that a bit and Sandy Bryant can probably speak even better than I, but yes, there was.
Ms. Bryant, come on up.
There will be an RFP coming out. It won't be coming to the CSBs, is my understanding, it'll be coming out to transportation systems from the Department of Mental Health. So, yes, and it's certainly needed. So, and I understand that we're one of the priorities for coverage of that transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beamer.
Thank you.
And that's another thing, I guess, you know, everybody got the letter from Mr. Campbell, Delvin Campbell. He's working on, hopefully, we can get a facility closer to us than Virginia Beach or down in eastern Virginia. It would make our transportation a lot more feasible. And, you know, just like people in Lee County and far southwest Virginia, that is a long ways to have to go to transport somebody. So, hopefully, we can get something a little bit closer.
It's particularly ridiculous when you have sheriffs crossing each other. Virginia Beach driving their people, community citizens here and we're driving them there. And that has to do with the bank capacity, but also the rule, you have to call every hospital in the state project or if you use the state hospital.
Well, thank you all. Okay, going back to our agenda, next is Budget Committee Report. Mr. Lester?
Budget Committee met on September 20th, 2018 and made the following recommendations. Number one is to proceed with upgrading to a 600 KW generator as part of the Georgewood High School renovation project. The total project is estimated to be less than $60,000. The committee recommends amending and appropriating $60,000 for the same. The existing 175 KW generator can be moved to Fort Chisel High School to allow for a future shelter site.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, so open the floor up for discussion. Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item?
The next item is to transfer $27,000 from Capital Projects, County Motor Vehicles and Equipment, $9,000-470200 to Capital Projects, wastewater motor vehicles and equipment, This will establish future vehicle expenditure into the correct capital budget.
Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Do you want to summarize any further, Mr. Bear?
Basically, what he said is just the fact. It was in the $9,000, which is the general county capital equipment. $9,060 is the wastewater capital expenditures and it helps within the computer system, the finance system for it to be in the correct department. So, it's just a transfer of those funds, no additional appropriation or anything needed.
Okay.
It's accounting adjustment.
It's an accounting adjustment, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Mr. Lester, anything else from the Budget Committee?
That was all.
Okay, County Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items on the County Administrator's Report. The first item is a resolution request to be adopted for a Line of Duty Act. The state has been sending us information, as you are aware. We have been providing insurance coverage, workers' comp and additional accidental and disability insurance, and also been providing the Line of Duty Act coverage through VACO insurance programs for our fire and rescue individuals. The state has contacted indicating that they need a resolution, as is attached here, indicating that we recognize the existence of the non-volunteer fire departments and rescue squads.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2018-32.
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Questions?
Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Have we looked at that? Why? Why do they need that resolution?
They are needing it in order for the volunteers to show that they are covered under the Line of Duty Act and have received those benefits. The county has to recognize the individual departments or squads. And I had Martha go back and look, sometime back when I was researching something in the 90s, I came across similar type documentation where this hadn't been done, but we could not locate that in the 90s records. And the state did not indicate they had any recognition of that item.
Has the county attorney looked at that language? There's no written agenda there?
He has not looked at it.
When I reviewed the board package, when I reviewed what was in the board package, I did not notice anything that raised a red flag.
So, in recognition, are you recognizing the department or the individual?
Well, you're recognizing the agencies.
Which is a department.
Which is a department. And then their volunteers.
In our case, they're all incorporated.
Yep. And their volunteers would then be covered under Line of Duty Act. And that's why it's important, every year, Curtis is not here with us, but every year, March or sometime another, they have to certify and present a list to the Clerk of Circuit Court's office of who their volunteers are on the department. And that establishes those volunteers of that agency for that year.
And basically, all the resolution is by these names and they're listed, we're recognizing them as agencies that serve with the county.
But their identity, they're recognized as independent businesses by the State Corporation Commission.
Yes, they are, correct.
So, it's a little bit not so simple that they're an agency. They're a provider of services, but they're not really a county agency. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. I don't think it's calling them a county agency.
No, but we're referring to them as an agency. They're a service provider.
Right.
And the only thing I ask is, by this resolution, there's not some agenda there that we're not aware of?
No.
Okay.
Any more questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Back to my agenda here, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, at the last meeting, you all agreed to proceed with the notice of intent. There needs to be a resolution that is sent to the Commissioner in the process. So, in the process of reviewing it, staff has drafted the intent to abandon and recommend the attached Resolution 2018-33 for the board to adopt.
Entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-33?
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion?
Is that property out of rural tree?
Yes, that's a good road in the Black Lake District. Yes, sir.
Any more questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
The next item there is a letter for the Southwest Virginia EMS Council. They are applying to renew its designation as a Regency Emergency Medical Services Council and it requires a letter of, they're requesting a letter of support. And we, I highly recommend us approving this and allowing, authorizing my signature on this letter.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item we have is, just I gave you the letter that we received from the Community Development Block grant on our project number 16-29, which is the sewer extension for lot number 20. We have until this Friday to send in a response to them. I also included with it the letter that I received last Friday from the company with the timeline of their construction. And this afternoon, tomorrow, this information will be copied over and sent to them and a copy of this letter sent to DHCD to try to get the extension to meet this timeframe. So, just keeping you all informed of all of those activities.
When it's, what is their deadline for pulling it?
Well, they indicated two months ago that they were considering pulling it and I requested a two-month extension to give them the timeframe. So, that deadline is this Friday to get this timeline into them and then hope that they will approve acceptance of this timeframe. My concern is that anything beyond this timeframe right here would result in the grant being pulled. So, it's very critical that we work with the company to make certain they are hitting this timeline that they have presented.
Have you communicated with them?
Yes.
Of the importance of that?
Our position hasn't changed, has it, Mr. Bear? About any expenditures until there's activity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next item?
Next item is the Veterans Memorial Highway Celebration. We will be working with staff. Mr. Vaughn is working with his connections with veterans of foreign wars and American Legion groups and Boy Scouts and others for the celebration on October 20th. As you can see, it will start at nine o'clock in Bland County, will travel down 52, will be at the Shock Tower around 11 o'clock. Have a short celebration there. Basically, we'll have a copy of the sign or a printout of the sign to go up. We hope to have a young lady to sing the National Anthem for us. It's a town, a young lady in the area. And we are working on individuals or a speaker, especially if we have some former war veteran that can speak briefly there at the time. And if anybody has any comments or input, please get it to me or Ms. Collins as soon as possible as we're working this up.
Well, you know, if we get there at 11 o'clock and we get to Hillsville at 11:30, there's not going to be very much time for anybody to speak.
Leave for Hillsville 11:30. So, we've got 30 minutes there, yep. So, we've worked out with, I appreciate Sam Sweeney agreeing to provide the grounds to us for that day. So, it's, will not be any issue to, and we won't have to worry about the parking fees and that for having it there. The idea of having it at the Shock Tower, I thought was brought up as a good idea. It's a historical war structure and works out well for us. Any comments, please give them to us. We look forward to planning this event and having a successful event. If anybody wants to drive their Harley or big old black convertible with the top down or other things from Bland to Hillsville, we encourage you to join the entire trip. Next item on the agenda, it's just informational purposes. Mr. Crawford could not be with us today. I was going to make certain he'd been introduced to the full board as well, but he did an excellent job in preparing for the storm and working with the fire departments, reviewing the emergency operations center plan. Mr. Southers, Mr. Koch assisted with that, Darlene from the dispatch side. As you know, we did not ever declare a local emergency here, but everything was in place and ready to go if we needed to set up a shelter. And he just sort of put this follow-up report together and I just wanted to share it with the board and let you all be aware. We're fortunate that the storm passed by us and we didn't have too many issues with it.
And I do want to say that, you know, we had a meeting with state police, fire departments and hospitals, all the emergency readiness people morning and Curtis did do an excellent job in his presentation. And I think we were ready. I'm glad we didn't have to declare a county emergency. We were ready. I mean, everybody was on their game and had everything prepared for it. And I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work and pulling it all together and making us ready for anything that could have occurred.
Next item I have is just a Grous Ridge Road update. I have been working with VDOT. If you remember, when we had the public hearing in here, one of the gentleman's comments was about his fence and whether his fence had to be moved. VDOT has indicated they do not see any need to move any fences. However, there are nine, I believe it is, poles, AEP poles that are going to have to be moved. That'll be added into the cost. That is all at the owner's expense. We will work with VDOT and AEP and if there's any that we possibly do not have to move, if it can be far enough outside of the right of way, we prefer to do that because it just saves those landowners paying that much more in their taxes towards that. So, we try to do all we can to minimize that cost, but there's quite a few of them that we know for certain are going to have to be moved out of the right of way. When Mr. Vaughn met with AEP last week, I think they talked about getting the coordination of that together. So, just wanted to give you an update on that project. Next item is the tire collection day. The memo is in there for the tire collection day, October 6th, I believe, Saturday, October 6th. And recommend calling for the appointments or mandatory call for the appointments and there is a limit of 100 tires on it. So...
I would like to say, you know, I think our, how just material collection went well. Here, we may need to have more than one a year. I think it was, we had a lot of people there.
Yeah, it's, we may have to work on coming up with better ways of maintaining, of managing traffic in there because it was quite a line for quite a bit of the day of getting in there. So...
Do you have an update on how much we collected or?
Have not seen the update on the report yet. I saw the picture of the traffic backed up into the road and said it was like that pretty much all day. And that had been a request, I believe it was joint governing bodies meeting, that maybe the town of Withfield talked about, you know, was there, asking with counties their separate day. And actually, it's put on and at the expense of the Joint Public Service Authority. But with the volume and numbers, it may be something that needs to be looked at as to whether they start doing it twice a year. Or if, and also if there's another location that would work better, that's obviously good there because it's a covered area of bringing everything into, but we just don't have enough queuing area for the parking.
I'd just like to know how much, like, paint was collected. I mean, because, you know, we can, you can open a can of paint, let it dry up and throw it in the trash bag with your regular trash.
I'll, once I get the updated report, we'll put it on the package for information.
And get that information out to people. And get that information out to people, maybe, you know, they won't need to have a, I mean, we may have to need a day, but maybe not two days. I'd just like to see how much paint was, paint was collected. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
I do have two other items. One is just the smart scale for exit seventy-seven. We have two applications in. The one is for the Connector Road project, which Bill's done a lot of follow-up discussions with him on that, and, and everything appears to be in line or concurred to on the agreements with that, and it's, it's looking very good. The smart scale project on exit seventy-seven, we talked about last time, was for the lighting of seventy-seven, and this was primarily for just the flashing lights. Mr. Vaughn met with AEP and VDOT last week. AEP does not have an issue with putting two poles in for us in that area, and VDOT has no problem with stringing the lights and hanging the lights in that area. The comment comes down to who pays for the pole installation. So we'll get that cost from AEP of what that's going to cost, and see if we can do any discussions with VDOT, but more than likely, they're going to be looking for that to be a county expense, and that will come back to you all once we have those numbers. But to get flashing lights there and help controlling that intersection some, it may be something we want to consider going ahead and doing.
Well, I think we'll have to do it.
Yep.
What was the timeline?
Once we get the numbers from them, it should be, AEP, I think, can work it in pretty quickly into their schedule. Is that correct, Bill?
Yeah, once the poles are in, VDOT's going to get right off.
When do you expect to get a, a price from AEP?
I should get one this week.
So that, that covers it. Does anybody have any questions on, on that?
And that will help everybody up there. I mean, I get complaints from the, the mail lady, but she retired. I get complaints from the new mail lady now, says she's going to get killed about that intersection, so.
I think that's something that should have been looked at a long time ago.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it'll be, I think it'll be beneficial. And then Mr. Hale had a good idea on top of that, is that once we get those poles up, can it be something, even if we just get a couple dusted on, like their AEP-type street lights on there to help light up that intersection as well? So we'll, we'll, we'll walk first, and then see if we can run with the second part after.
They can put those high-intensity LEDs, if you come off the road, say at night. We all know that intersection is not nearly as bad at night as it is when the quarry's running and all the businesses running, but when you come off the road from car lights, and you come to an intersection that's intensely lighted, it sort of perks you up, and you realize you are somewhere, you better pay attention. So if, if we can make that available, and I know that State Electric has a ring that, of those lights that can, all they need to know is the diameter of what you're going to hook it to, and AEP would be no more than any other rental on another O, would it?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So I think it would really help that intersection, safety-wise, have more light there.
No. Unless anybody's got any other questions about that, Mr. Chairman. Last item I got is just, I put on there just a status report. Just wanted to go over a few things with you on personnel. We currently have a vacancy in the wastewater department. We have one full-time and one part-time vacancy in central dispatch position. The last buildings and grounds position is being filled. I believe the gentleman has accepted the offer on it. I don't have the start date, but he will be starting there. And of course, Mr. Crawford has been hired as our emergency services coordinator, and that is going well. It is audit season, so our finance department is working on audit preparations in addition. Tyler Munus, as, they are currently implementing the work order module. The work order module, the school system, the water, the wastewater department, and buildings and grounds have highly been involved with that, obviously with the finance department. We would like to work with the sheriff's office on, on getting them involved in that for, for tracking purposes on, on work orders. If we end up doing some of the maintenance work through an outside contractor that they're dealing with, that may take away some of the work order requirements, but it could still help do some planning on it. I've asked David and Bruce to come to the October meeting to give you all a, a status of where we are on Tyler Munus, where we, what the modules we've implemented, the modules we still have to implement. Once we get this work order up and running here in a month or so, then we go back into trying to get the water and wastewater module up and implemented, and that's the one I think will have, that and the self-service will have the most impact on our public when we get it out there with them being able to pay their bills online and, and set up for their connections online and all that. Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance, the executive committee met yesterday. Do have some updates and some social media marketing data that I'll be sharing with you. Mr. Lewis is, he's drafting some proposals for expansion of the Virginia Industrial Advancement Alliance to assist with economic marketing and recruitment. So I'll be scheduling him here probably later this year, first of next year, to go over his vision on that and impact it would have on localities, on, on their budgets, and what services they would be wanting to provide. Last week, when Mr. Reeves and I were at the Tobacco Commission meeting, the good news was that their agency, along with some other regional marketing agencies, did receive some funding from the Tobacco Commission to fund their operations and marketing efforts. So, and that hopefully will be funding that we'll be able to continue to assist them. The New River Regional Water Authority, we have placed a emergency connection ramp and pad down next to the river, and this has been put in for just in case there is a situation where both pumps, for some reason, on the intake station would go out. They can call this company, they'll bring in, like on a flatbed or a trailer, they'll bring a, a pump in, and it sets down closer to the river, because the closer you can get to the water level, the better off you are pumping it. And then it goes up, and then there's a connection made into our existing piping system that they would pump into, to pump water to the New River Regional Water Authority plant. So it's just a backup system. We've got dual systems down there as it is, but just in the strange situation that both of those would go out, we do have an alternative that can come in, set up, and be ready to go. Unfortunately, the gravel pad got covered with a little bit of silt last week, so we'll have to clean the gravel pad back off a little bit, but it, it managed to weather the storm well, so. Opioid lawsuit, I met yesterday at Pulaski County, and the, with the attorneys, they have given us a list of questions, a very extensive list of questions, that we've got a couple of months to go through and get answers to. We'll be working with staff, constitutional officers, DSS, Health Department, and others and respond to those. A lot of it's just, you know, budget numbers, and who are your board supervisors members, or who are your DSS board, you know, who are, who are all your players in this during the timeframe? But it is an extensive list, and will take staff quite a bit of time to go through and get all that information together. But that's just a preliminary work on that. They just wanted to meet with us and go over that. Cryfa has recently met, and we should be having an announcement coming soon for some local expansion coming out in the press. Tobacco Commission, I discussed. Blake and I will be meeting with the representative from the Tobacco Commission, which is going to be this week, it's now been postponed to next week. We, the board has previously approved a grant go into the agribusiness program. That grant is due October eighteenth, so Mr. Miller was here, but we will be working with them in reviewing that and talking about the grant application, and hopefully getting some good feedback for any additions that we need to have with that. Revenue-sharing Grous Ridge Road, a mixed, ready mixed road. Bill has submitted plans to VDOT for our drainage easement, or our drainage construction down there around the Burger King area, and the new pipe underneath the road. Rough estimates are in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars or so to get all of that in place for, for VDOT to then come in and pave the road and take the road over. So as we get final approval of that, we will be requesting some bids on that from some contractors to come in and do that work. Town of Withfield, y'all may remember, we were working with them on a water plant pilot project on some chlorine, changing some of the chlorine system down there. They did make a minor attempt at the pilot project, but it has, they ended up having a few issues with it. They have, the, the operators have stopped completely on, on trying the project. I'm still trying to work with Wayne Sutherland, Mr. Crisp, and their engineer from the town on continuing that pilot project. It's why you call it a pilot project. You, you tinker with it, and you mess with it. You don't just try one option, and if it doesn't work, stop the whole thing. So we will, still want to keep that active. We think it can show benefits for both the town and the county. And the last item I've got is library. Y'all, I think I all got the email this week on the good news library, it's looking at increasing the hours at the real treat library. Mr. Lester maybe will give us an update on other things, but they had some training classes or sessions last week. And I've had some conversations with the county administrator from Grayson County. He and I are going to be scheduling some meetings to make certain that our regional library is functioning as, I guess, equitable and as efficient as possible in its operations. So, just want to give you an update on a lot of status and a lot of things that are going on outside of some of the things you all see in the board package. More than willing to answer any questions you have about these or any other items.
When you were going over the water plant, what's the status of the generator for the pumps at the high school?
Mr. Crisp and Mr. Stowers, over the last two weeks, especially with the storm coming in, I asked them to take advantage of the opportunity and make some requests on, on where the status of this was. They made some phone calls, went up, you know, to some Richmond individuals. The individual from Regional Emergency Management Coordinator that took Willie Richardson's place called me last week, understood our urgency, understood our priority, has indicated that we are on the docket to be approved, we're on the slate to be approved, the matching, the matching amount is, is the amount of what's out there, but we should be getting that grant, it's just waiting for the wheels of government in Richmond to turn to get that to us.
Well, the, the gravity of that is with us opening Apex Center, that makes our sprinkler system very, very reliable, and we're not dependent on tank pressure. Those pumps kick on, but we don't have a power pump, and no need for one. This gets into a building issue along with water that, in my opinion, should have been dealt with ten, fifteen years ago, so that has a priority. You think the money's in the mail?
It's, it's in the making. I don't know that it's in the mail yet.
All right, thank you.
Got everything, Mr. Bear?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Fardley?
Uh, yes, sir. Just one item. I did, Mr. Bear, sent you an email about the repayment, the Withfield Opportunity Fund grant, which was given to Ebatrian some years ago. They proposed a payment schedule, which I spoke with Mr. Bear, and we believe that's acceptable to us, because they're paying back all the funds that were given to them by the grantman. So, we had not heard of any response from you, I just wanted to let you know, I will probably let them know later today that that's appropriate, and we'll, we'll settle the repayment, since it was approved for you.
Do you need an emotional approval by the board?
No, at this point in time, I think until he gets a settlement agreement, as long as you all are fine with that, he'll get everything documented and bring that agreement back. I've got your response, yep.
Did they come through with, they agreed on interest rates?
They did not. They did not propose any interest, and there's nothing in the writing that requires them to pay interest, if they fall.
Oh, that was the other one that agreed. You remember?
That was the former one, that's correct.
Yeah. Did we collect the interest?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And they did not sign that agreement.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Fardley?
Yes, sir. That's all.
Okay, board supervisors. District one, Black Lake District, Mr. Ball?
Just to iterate kind of what you said about the, the storm preparedness, it'd be nice to meet Mr. Crawford because him and Mr. Bear, I think, done a good job, everybody else that was involved. Kind of glad we didn't take a knee-jerk reaction like
Some of those counties.
Some locales, start canceling school, everything else, so I guess trial by fire, so far, he's done a pretty good job.
Drinking from the water hose pretty quick, that one, that's for sure.
I did get a comment that they appreciated, that people appreciated we started using social media more. I know it was kind of dormant for a while, but especially with that situation. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ball. West Withfield, Mr. Lester?
Nothing at this time.
East Withfield?
I have nothing at this time.
Fort Chisel District?
Nothing at this time.
Lead Mines District?
Nothing at this time.
Spiegel District?
I have two complaints for VDOT. One of them was flooding at Butch Brewer's house, but I think they're going to take care of that culvert. I think they looked at yesterday and realized they got a culvert at their twenty-one that's
Butch is way up on the hill.
Yeah, but Amanda's not. She was, she was almost way up underwater. The other thing was, and we've talked about this before, it's VDOT again, where they moved the Hobak residents and put them down there and built them a nice house, but they don't ditch Old Bank Road down through there, and the other day, whenever we had a hard rain, it washed the manure off the hill and down to their new house. And I just, I don't understand why VDOT can't dig a ditch. I would like to venture at least a little bit to keep in contact, see what they can do.
What's the name of the family again?
Hobak.
Hobak.
And it's run off from the feedlot?
Well, I mean, I'm sure some of it was the runoff from the feedlot, some of it's just a runoff coming off of the hill, but I mean, it runs right down underneath that brand-new house, and VDOT will not dig a ditch to put it in the creek. I mean, I don't want it in the creek either, but I mean, I'd rather it be in the creek than under their house.
Maybe they should bore up under the road, I heard them say.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a common thing to do in Spiegel.
Anything else, Mr. Hornet?
I think that's all I can remember.
We'll remind, I guess everybody got Delegate Morfield's invitation for October the fourth. I hope you can attend. Delegate Morfield supports our county on just about everything we asked him to. I did talk to him at the Tobacco Commission, and I talked to Senator Carrico, and I would like to ask any board member if anything we need to put in to the General Assembly as far as bills go. We need to be thinking about that, and where I can have meetings with Campbell and Carrico to, to get these things on their agenda. They'd like to get them in, in December, especially the Senate, on the Senate side, I think.
What's the status of the tobacco tax, tobacco taxation?
Well, I, you know, I talked to Senator Carrico about that last week. He said Philip Morse is not going to fight us on it. It's looking better this year than it's, than it's looked in the past. I'm going to remind them and, and bring it up. Some of the counties are still, you know, looking at equal taxation as far as on everything, not just the tobacco tax, and I don't know if we can go that far this year, but, you know, we can still, still request that bill to be put in, along, I know we have a bill that's been set aside until this General Assembly session as far as a referendum on the tobacco tax, but I've had other counties still wanting But, uh, I've had other, uh, counties, uh, still, uh, wanting equal taxation between city counties and towns.
But they're two separate issues. Will it be two different bills or are they going to try to lump it?
No, it'd have to be two separate bills, uh, or, uh, I need to talk to them about the bill we've got in now and if we want to put just a bill, a bill in to collect tax on, uh, tobacco products or, and a bill for equal taxation. It would have to be two separate bills.
But, I mean, which one's carried over?
A referendum bill.
Referendum, on tobacco only or?
Yeah, on tobacco only.
Okay, but that bill is already there and will be brought up by committee?
Yes, unless, uh, it's withdrawn and another bill's put forward.
And Baco is going to do what for us?
Uh, Baco has always advocated for, uh, equal taxation and cigarette tax. Uh, even the Sheriffs Association, uh, spoke two years ago when I went down and, and, uh, spoke in front of the, the House Committee. Um, Baco spoke, I spoke, uh, the Sheriffs Association spoke, and I think three more delegates spoke in favor of it and, uh, one representative from the tobacco industry spoke and they tabled the bill. So, I mean, we have, we have support, uh, from the, plenty of delegates and, uh, we need, uh, the support of the Speaker and, uh, the committee chairs. We need to talk to them and hopefully I can get a, a meeting set up, uh, this fall with the Speaker of the House and, uh, I'm going to try to get a, uh, meeting set up with Governor North.
Mr. Chairman, if I might on that issue, if y'all remember the lobbying group that you all agreed to, to work with, um, I was supposed to have a meeting with several county administrators, a joint meeting tomorrow. It's been postponed out a few weeks, but once I have information from that, I will share that with you.
Uh, and, uh, Smith County, uh, County Administrator talked to me about that last week too, at the Tobacco Commission meeting. I don't know, is Carroll County, uh, on board with that too?
I, the email I got doesn't list who all it went to, so I'm not sure which all counties are in on it or not.
When is it rescheduled for?
Don't have a date yet.
Uh, and, uh, Delegate Morfield is at, uh, it's on the fourth, at, uh, is that, am I correct, Mr. Bear?
Yes, sir. It's the fourth at, I want to say six P.M.
At Martha Washington, uh?
Six thirty, I believe.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay.
And all board members and guests are invited. And I urge you to attend, I mean, to show our support for, I don't know, what it, do you know what it's about?
I do not, no. No, the only information I have was from the, the email that you all received a copy of.
Just a social hour.
Yeah.
Oh, could, could, could you call Marty and find out what we're supporting?
Yeah. I will be glad to.
But like I said, you know, uh, I'd like for as many of us that can to go and support Delegate Morfield because he does, you know, he supports us and the things that we're doing in this county, not only on the Tobacco Commission, but in the General Assembly too.
Yeah, he can sell ice cream for, uh, west, west of that.
Okay, uh, I don't think I have anything else to report. I guess everybody, Martha's got everything to you for the, the Baco Conference in November. Uh, all of that is, uh, set.
What date is that?
Baco Conference?
Eleventh through the thirteenth.
Yes, Sunday the eleventh through Tuesday the thirteenth.
Okay.
And that's all I have. We're going to new business, uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent counter.
Does that move?
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen consent counter. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
Uh, uh.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item is, uh, fiscal year nineteen expenditure budget, second quarter appropriations. Entertain a motion to appropriate second quarter.
Some of.
Have a second.
Thank you.
Have a motion of second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hornet?
Aye.
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 The Chair moved, votes aye. Next day is, uh, update on the temporary detention order, transportation update.
I just put a copy of, uh, Mr. Campbell's letter in here that Mr. Vaughn alluded to earlier, uh, where you all passed the resolution, uh, concerning that, so, uh, just wanted to include it in here for your information.
Okay. Next, we're going to E, uh, Expo, uh, first item is livestock pen system.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, would it be possible for us to take about a five-minute recess before we get into that?
Uh, I think we could. Uh, we'll be in recess for ten minutes. Is ten oh five, eleven oh five A.M., I mean. Uh, I will ask the skip on Apex, the first item, because, um, the Chairman of the, uh, Authority's on his way back and he'd like to, to speak on that, so we'll go down to the number two, the Apex fence bid.
Yeah, number two, uh, Mr. Vaughn, uh, put out requests for bids for the Apex fence installation. In front of you and in the back of all that package you've got is a copy of, uh, section of the fence, uh, that has been donated, uh, to the county. It has these, uh, colored slats in it already. Um, the, um, the, there is plenty of fence, there are some of the connecting joints. We have to still buy the posts to go with it, uh, but obviously the most important or most expensive cost is going to be, um, the labor for the installation of the fence. Uh, what, uh, he solicited bids, did not receive any bids in. In fact, this company actually submitted their bid in about fifteen minutes after the, uh, bid timeline and we sent the bid back with them. And then, uh, he went into negotiations, uh, with them following that and this is basically, I think they brought in and opened up their bid for, uh, Mr. Vaughn at that point in time. Um, but their bid price is twenty dollars a square foot, uh, for the solicited work. Bill, that
Should be linear.
For linear foot. I'm sorry, uh, linear foot.
My gosh, we got paid for the square foot of fence.
You said twenty-nine hundred linear foot, but you put square foot. I did, so.
One foot of fence length.
And that includes for them to put the, uh, the, uh, concrete around the post and all that. We still have to buy the post, uh, so this does not cover all costs, but if, uh, if the Board is willing to proceed with entering into, uh, purchase order with them for the installation of the fence, Bill will go ahead and do so and finalize the purchase of the post.
How many dollars did add up to?
Well, what was, the base bid was from near the, the sign at Flying J, um, going up along the property line to Ready Mix Road, all the way up Ready Mix Road and then turning and going out to, uh, uh, where the well, where the water line connection is out there. That's twenty-nine hundred linear foot. So, that would cost fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for the installation of that fence. If we went all the way down along Chapman Road to the, um, uh, Storm Water Management Pond, that would add about another eleven hundred feet to it, so another twelve thousand dollars or so to it in that case. So, about seventy thousand dollars, uh, for installation of the fence that you see.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'd, I'd like to consider trying to find somebody else to do this work. Seems like to me that seventy thousand dollars is a lot of money. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, how much of it requires clearing and leveling?
Very little on this stretch.
That's what I thought. So, to, to drill post holes and we're, are we furnishing the post or are they furnishing the post?
We are furnishing the post.
Uh, we, we, we can't go there. That's just ridiculous. But I, I think we reject that whole procedure unless we do better.
Are we still requiring a contractor's license for this?
Uh, I don't know.
You did originally.
You did originally.
Yeah, no, this came out.
But has it been put out to local fence?
The livestock panel was the one that we had the question on, on it about the contractor bid on it. Um, and we took it out on that because that was not, that we did not require it.
Well, it also had it, you had it on the fence because it's a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
If, if you're providing the material, that, that's basically a labor contract.
I, I don't disagree with the material. I think the price, Mr. Vaughn had anticipated looking at means twenty-one dollars a linear foot.
But that was to furnish everything.
No, that was not everything, was it? Was that the, no.
Uh, well, it's, yeah, when you take out the materials, the labor and the concrete in there, change the pressure a little bit, it runs about fifteen dollars for labor, fifteen square foot. He's in the ballpark, I guess, maybe he knew he was the only one, so.
My ballpark, be honest.
Yeah.
But, but I, I just think we need to get a better price locally, uh, suspend, suspend the contractor license, require insurance, the county's covered. That's, that's just too much money.
Well, we'll go, it, uh, we will go back. Uh, we just submitted this in, um, that, that basically that was the, the bid price that we received, even though it wasn't, but it, um,
We only submitted.
We, uh,
Yeah, if you're the only bidder, you can put whatever.
Well, they didn't, he didn't know he was the only bidder when he put that in.
Well, if he got there, Lady probably knew it.
No, he didn't, when he dropped it off up front, it was.
God, I've seen him sit out in the parking lot and see who walked in and get a bid in two minutes before the deadline. That'd be atrocious.
Well, we'll go back and, um, discuss with them and other contractors if that price is just too high.
Have you talked to that fence builder from down in Tulaski County or is that the one?
This is the one.
Yeah, well, who, who, do you know who signed the bid?
What was the name?
Tammy Akers? Yeah, yeah, Akers. Tommy Akers? Tommy, Tammy.
Tammy Akers.
Tommy Akers, yeah, Tommy Akers. He used the same email. He's a, Tammy, Tommy.
Since you have bid it, can you use that procurement process of soliciting free prices and see if you can negotiate some prices and get that number down? Sometimes, you know, if people don't understand the procedure and don't understand the scope of work, it's easy to say, it's my fault, I didn't explain it right to you, now let's cut the price.
We would, uh, we would do some negotiations with them and see. Um, the best thing would be is if, um, I mean, I, I don't know if we rebid it that you're going to get any bids. It's going to be our problem.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
If we don't rebid it, if we use the telephone, uh, the process of getting free prices.
Well, we will do that, I guess, I'll ask for guidance so we can tell them exactly. Do you want to do the twenty-nine hundred feet only or do you want to take it up to four thousand feet? Um, and we did, we're, we were doing the original twenty-nine hundred because we don't really know how much donated fence we have down there.
But we also know that we've got a liability problem if we don't do that part along Chapman Road.
Yep.
If I had livestock get out, I'd rather see them go toward the sand plain in the mountain than go to work instead of going to the interstate.
I would, I would rather take it up Ready Mix Road and stop at the corner and in the extra place be from there across to the, the water line.
Pond, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, if you're, say again?
Uh, from, from the top of, top corner of Ready Mix Road, the extra fence be put in there between there and, uh, down to where it drops down to the ponds.
The frontage road on Chapman Road.
Do the frontage road and along the truck stop and up Ready Mix Road is the top priority.
Right, because that's where your most liability is.
Yep.
Uh, Stephen, did, I mean, when you're calling and asking for, for quotes, just, you can just have them quote both distances?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, you can do it.
Now, and the only thing is, we may run out of fence.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But, that's why we put twenty dollars a linear foot. If we have twenty-nine hundred feet or three thousand feet, that's where we'll stop. If we have two thousand feet, that's where we'll stop. And I don't know that we're, you know, we're still providing the poles and everything. We, and, and Bill's got the cost on that to go with it. Um, you know, the fence is saving us a little bit, but it's still the, the most expenses in that labor of, of putting it up.
If, if, if we run out of fence, we can probably still get plenty of free fence, but it may not be that quality with the ribbon in it.
Right.
And some of that fence, like the part that goes, uh, across the south side between the Humberto property and goes off over the hill.
Yep.
It wouldn't be a big deal if that didn't have the visual strips in it. But it's pretty nice to have it along, uh, Ready Mix Road, I think, and that, that is in good shape, but it doesn't all have to be alike, I think, once you turn, turn a corner.
Yep.
If you were in the middle of a tangent run, it wouldn't look good to change, but if you change on a corner and it's a difference of buying it and it being free, I would go for, for the free.
Okay. Oh, we'll go back up to the, to the livestock panel, uh, livestock panel system. Uh, we do have a recommendation, recommendation from the Authority and, uh, we have the Chairman of Authority here if he wants to come up and, and, uh, talk about their recommendation. Mr. Miller?
Uh, well, I think you guys have what we, uh, submitted. Uh, it is just a recommendation. I didn't prepare anything in advance, but, um, we met, uh, and discussed the bids that were submitted. Uh, we felt like all the components were usable. There's a sizable difference in cost. Um, certainly, I think there's one that I would describe as the Cadillac and there's one I think that certainly would be the Chevy, and I think the Chevy will work. Our Board had a lot of discussion. Uh, we voted five to one, one member abstained because they have a family member that, uh, is involved in that bid process, which was the right thing to do. And, uh, our recommendation was to ask you all to move forward with, uh, investigating those, uh, pen systems further, uh, and to look at, uh, moving forward with the purchase.
Miss four-one-one was the vote?
Ah, four-one-one, yeah. That's right, because we were, we were absent one member.
Yes.
Y'all have questions for me or, uh, we've looked at the systems, uh, certainly I think there are bells and whistles on some that make them better than others. Um, I think the low bid, uh, will work, uh, for what needs to be. Would it be as nice as the one at a hundred and twenty-some thousand? Probably not. Uh, I don't think it will have a lot of problems with it. Um, we've, Buddy's looked at systems, I've looked at systems, uh, the members have looked at systems. None of them are perfect. Uh, we've done some checking into the company that was the low bid, uh, they've done some other work in Southwest Virginia, they've done some work in Abenin at the Tri-State Livestock Market. Uh, there is a bid, Buddy, as I understand it, that the Washington County Fairgrounds is looking at that same company right now, which ironically would replace, uh, equipment provided by the other bid submitter on your all sheet. Uh, that equipment's old, it's fifteen years old, it's not held up, uh, maybe like it should have held up over fifteen years, but it's probably not been babied either. It's been, had a lot of wear and tear. Um, but, so, that's where we're at. Um, you know, my two cents is for us to do a sale and accommodate sales, we know we have to have that type of system, uh, We also know that there are, there will be no sales at that facility before the calendar year turns. So there won't be anything there before 2019 at this point. We had anticipated some sales there in November, late October. Because of the time crunch, the concern about having everything completed, those entities have looked at other venues to, for this fall.
But as far as the, you know, and I thought about this, and somebody mentioned it to me, is, is using the panels like around the sidewalk on the, on the north end of the building?
That was part of our discussion in our board meeting, is that if you have a trade show. I sent Stephen a link for something yesterday that I don't know if it'll materialize, but it's a pretty neat deal. But if you have a trade show, one of the things you can do is take those panel systems and that creates a ten-by-ten trade show space. Or a ten-by-twenty trade show space. So the pins that y'all have in front of you are ten-by-ten slots, but you could do a ten-by-thirty. You just take some of the center gates out. So you could price your trade show spaces and use the panels to separate your vendors. And they can hang stuff off the panels. They could put something up to, you know, isolate their pin over somebody else. But that would work. We, we, we were down there Friday. We looked at the sidewalk. Some of the discussion was now that there is a interior sidewalk. If you have something going on on the floor, you've definitely got to have some type of physical barrier to keep people from walking down the sidewalk. And they mean on the competition floor. That is going to require some type of panel. It won't require all ninety pins, obviously, but it will require something to keep people from entering that competition surface if they're on the sidewalk, going from side to side. So that, that makes the panels more usable. Do I think they're going to be only for livestock sales? No. You know, there's, if you want to hold animals, if you want to have a rodeo, most of those people bring in their own stuff. But those systems could accommodate more animal housing or whatever the case may be to assist with a rodeo, a horse show, whatever the case may be.
Being involved, if, if you schedule FFA and four-eight competitions down there, they can be set up outside under a tent.
Yes, sir. And that, and that's type of stuff, if we, you know, if, if we have something there, late winter, early. If, if the panels aren't, if you guys don't purchase panels, then somebody's going to have to provide panels for those type of events. I mean, you know, it's your heritage day the other day. You have panels there provided by somebody. And you have to have them for, to have pins, have animal housing, whatever the case may be. So it's, there is a time window there that says, is there, do the panels have to be bought to accommodate a sale this fall? No. They don't.
But you've got, you've got a valid point of, they're, they're not just for animal stuff. They can be divided. They can be used for other things.
Well, you know, one of our board member that really has very little to do with animals made the comment that the ability to sell them as a trade show space and to find your space.
Right.
They'll probably return more money in that avenue than they would in any other fashion. So we, we actually had the discussion, I don't know if you all have had this discussion, about if you all purchased them, what, what would be the potential payback option? And we ran some numbers. So to give you all a general idea, and Buddy could speak to this very well, because Buddy was one of the ones that was going to have a sale there this fall. And hopefully, we'll have a sale there in, in coming months. But typically, you're looking at a percent and a half usage fee at a lot of those places. Some are charging more. Some of the people who want to be in our venue compared to the newer Valley Fairgrounds, newer Valley Fairgrounds told them four percent, which is a lot. So four percent of the gross. But, long story short, if, you know, if you had a half-million-dollar bull sale, which we need to try and get that southwest Virginia sale there. And they will gross, what, close to a half million. At a percent and a half, it doesn't take too many of those to start to chip away at a purchase price. And, you know, we've, I'm working with Stephen with this tobacco grant. I'm trying to create some numbers on the number of sales and the number of events that can justify those type things at that venue. And it's going to be a lot. Now, the question is, can you steal them from somewhere else? And sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. If the competitor says, come use my facility for free, it's hard to get them to leave a free site to pay one and a half percent. But there's still some advantages to ours quite a bit.
Two percent figure is a lot easier than one and a half.
It, it does. And, no, it does. I mean, so, I mean, if you're looking at, you know, just trying to calculate what, what can the ability of having pins generate? Sure, I mean, you're looking at, we, we discussed, what's the usable life of them? Certainly, easily ten years, realistically fifteen. The ones that Buddy works with and is aware of at Abingdon are fifteen-plus years old, and they are wore out. They may be older than that, Buddy. Were they, were they twenty years old?
Uh, yeah, probably eighteen to twenty.
Yeah.
They are flat worn out.
And they're worn out. So, you know.
One of the life cycle things is how do you store them when they're not of use?
Well, and who, and who picks them up and moves them?
Right.
So, you know, the, the ones that Buddy works with in Abingdon are stored typically under roof. Kind of in a lean-to type shed, so they don't get a lot of weather. But if you're slamming them around with a pallet fork and a front-end loader, and, they, they can get dented and deaned and bent up pretty quick. None of them are bulletproof. I'll tell you that. I mean, Buddy's seen them. There's discussion about the weight and the gauge and all that type of stuff. But if you mishandle them, they're all going to get bent and tore up. Gene would, Gene would attest to that. Yeah. And sometimes two thousand pounds still goes wherever two thousand pounds wants to go.
But I, I do want to interrate that, that the authority is go do a, a payback schedule over, over so many years.
We discussed that. We, I mean, if you all wanted to put that in an agreement, we certainly felt like it was very doable to say, usable life of ten years. Schedule that out and do a payback on the pins over ten years. I don't think we had that in our discussion, and nobody had an issue with that at all. So.
We have a very good model in the way we do revenue sharing with citizens on the road. You could use that same kind of methodology for, for you to pay it back, and that's a seven-year, isn't it?
And to that, to what you all said about the payback, one of the things we have looked at is, is asking an entity or multiple entities to sponsor the sale facility. Obviously, if that money comes in and their name becomes associated with the sale facility, well, that sponsorship money comes right back because it's the purchase price. So, you know, if somebody gives twenty-five thousand to have that be the Tim Reeve sale ring, well, the twenty-five thousand's got to come back. And we're looking forward to that, Tim. We appreciate that. What's the farm name?
Up my herd down there.
That's labeled on there, yeah. Robert made that commitment, taking up an M, yeah.
That'd be the Circle R.
Yeah, Circle R. Don't worry, Gene, you're getting the pins. Horny Angus and Circle R Self Facility.
The, the payback option does, does help in the situation. Not being negative, but just making certain that everyone understands, though, that can be a payback on those items. But for the first few years, this thing is not going to operate at a profit. So, you're, you're still paying yourself back in the process, but at least you can associate these pins with every time they have a sale, one, one and a half percent, whatever it is. And it would be a separate agreement that we would need to work out through SMG and with the authority in the county to, to do that.
Well, and the pins, in that same, would not necessarily have to be for sale. We know the sales are going to generate money. But the trade show, if they go that route, to use those panels and to find those spaces, would have to rent those spaces, obviously. And if they're using the panels, that money could go back that way as well.
Even separating the arena into two arenas or four arenas, I mean, having four different spots, four different things going on.
You know, it's, it's, we're pushing the start of 2019. It doesn't seem like it, but we are. But the other thing those panels can be used for, and I've talked to Stephen, and even when we visited with one of the, the bidders to talk about how can you use them in multiple fashions. One of the other things that this venue's going to attract will be what's called eastern regional livestock shows. And those panels afford an opportunity to create tie stalls. And with just the other day, I mean, that's four or five hundred head of cattle, which is a huge show. That's typically a three-to-four-day event. And whether, it's, it's by breed, but you're pulling people from all over the eastern United States. And, you know, they'll stay for three days. They'll travel in here. They'll eat and sleep and do all their business in, with county for three days. And, and those type of things draw in a big contingent. But those are the type of things the panels would be needed for, too. I mean, they're not going to be used just for sales. I think that's a misnomer to, to talk about them that way, but you can't have a sale without them, put it that way.
I'm going to go a little bit off his subject. What are your SMG? How close are you to signing a agreement?
Well, we think we're real close. I suspect Stephen and I are looking forward to an email anytime with the final draft. But our group meets Thursday. Our phone conversation with them last week, which I guess was on Wednesday. All the details that we've worried about as far as, there was basically one sentence that had caused revision about fifteen times. But anyway, that sentence was finalized, and I think we'll probably sign something with the management group, I would say, this week. I'd be surprised if it's not this week. You feel that's accurate, Scott? Scott's been very helpful to help define language with Philadelphia attorneys. That's been good.
Buddy, do you have anything to add? So anybody have any questions for Matthew?
I just have one, Buddy. I mean, the, what's, what's been quoted is similar or equivalent to what they've got out there in Abingdon, and it will work? I mean, because I know there's a lot of little, a lot of little components that's got to go together. And I mean, I know you've dealt with that out there enough, you all know about what you do. It will work for a sale. It's not the same, but it will work.
What we're discussing here is that y'all are going to continue to negotiate and tweak with them about the things that weren't covered or that they did not meet in the state's specification.
You talked to them?
We, we met with them, because yet, they handed out something at the authority meeting that did not meet the exact layout. And I, the first thing I said to them was, you bid a price of the eighty-two thousand dollars, and it said for ninety pins and five chutes, and whatever else was to go with it. I want to confirm your bid did this. And they said, yes, we drew this layout just to show you this. And the, the layout only had two chutes, and the price they had on it was seventy-seven thousand. And I said, I don't want to worry about it. I want to go off of, you're meeting the specs with your eighty-two thousand dollars, and that's where we are. So. And that's what Matthew and I met with them about, because if, if it did not, then they didn't meet, they didn't meet the bid specification for what they had. Now, there may be some additional items and gates and things that were not included in the bid. The authority may want to work with them and say, we need to buy a couple of gates, or we need to buy some, some different items in the process. But their bid that they submitted had everything in it.
Well, while you've got the leverage of ninety thousand dollar stick, you know, there was a discussion about losing pins. If you ask them to throw in an extra tub of pins to close the deal, they're going to throw in an extra tub of pins.
The, the, the best part about the low bid is it comes from local people who are extremely proud of what they do. And so if something is wrong, they're going to make it right. And the, the contractor, the constructor, is in Corbin, Kentucky, which is, you know, three hours, and he's over here every week. So, you know, if the pins are lost, or, and when we say pins, we're just talking about the attachment bolt. If something like that's a problem, surely they will make it right.
But they are manufactured in Corbin?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's a, I mean, he, that's where he's out of. And they work with him. I mean, that's, that's who their supplier is. So obviously, it's not manufactured in With County, but that's who their supplier is.
But the law of the money will be staying right here in With County.
Well, whatever profit those boys figured on paper will be staying right here in With County. I have no idea what that is. And obviously, they're considerably lower bid. I mean, it was a considerably lower bid.
Yeah.
Not even really close.
I have a comment, Mr. Miller. First of all, I appreciate you all and all the hard work you're putting into this. I know it's a lot of hours, and I do value your opinion. But from a county standpoint, when I look at the budget status and everything that's on it, I have concerns about how that's going to stretch out.
Sure. I mean, I, I think, we, you know, we've looked at the, we've looked at the same list that you all have. And it basically says, these are the items that are needed, and these are the items that we have money for. And I, I think there is, there are judgment costs as to what's put on there. So I, I certainly understand what you're saying.
What's, and to follow up on what she said, the, the Ring of Soul mix.
Yep.
What's a, what's a rough estimate of what that's going to cost?
I have no idea what it's going to cost. None. Zero. But I can tell you, I spent a long time on the phone with the guy in Clemson yesterday. We've got a gallon-sized bag of dirt getting shipped to my office. It's in the mail system right now. I can tell you, it's not going to be, well, I won't say. So, to go into the science behind this, you're looking at a foot to a foot and a half of material on top of the clay. Obviously, the clay's already in there. So, short of getting it leveled, there's no more expense. There's a pile of dirt outside that building. Mr. Hale called me yesterday. We're going to get a sample of that to figure out exactly what it is, how much sand, how much clay, and how much of it can be used. Because it's there, I mean, short of moving it, it's free. The, the consensus discussion is that the mix needs to be somewhere in the range of seventy to seventy-five percent sand. Now, we're pretty close to a sand pit from where that building's at. You know, does it all have to be purchased? Would they donate some sand? I don't, that's outside of the authority's purview right now to ask for a donation. I'm sure we could try. But to answer your question, I don't know what a foot of sand is going to cost to go across a hundred-and-fifty-by-three-hundred-foot arena. But I can tell you, it needs to be seventy to seventy-five percent sand, needs to be, that remainder, that thirty percent, needs to be about fifteen percent clay and fifteen percent silt alone. All the stuff that we need is in With County. I mean, it's, it's all available. There are times that that mix will require what they refer to as river sand, river wash sand. That's available in Speedway and other places. But, so the components are here, but to, I don't know if that's included. Was the material included as far as RGM had to put that back in? Is that part of their bid? So, I, I don't have any idea what the material's going to cost. But I can tell you that whatever you want to figure cubic feet of sand, that's going to give you a pretty good idea, whatever they're going to bring in there. Because you're looking at about seventy to seventy-five percent sand.
We've gone over this a couple of times. And Mr. Vaughn can quickly, I hope. We're not talking about a lot of yardage.
Right.
You know, it, the soil is pretty good that's out there, much better than if we'd been in another part of the county. Being on the toe of Sand Mountain helped. If you was over one valley, it wouldn't have been so good. If we'd been over on the limestone ridges, it wouldn't have been really good.
Yeah, our, our biggest challenge is rock. So, so the one thing that nobody likes in that arena floor is rock. But you're looking at a foot to a foot and a half of depth. The manager at the Clemson facility, which mirrors our building exceptionally well. No one that we have talked to has any complaints about his surface. So, he is a member of a group, Brian, that submits scientific samples. He's sending me his analysis, his literature. You have to pay to be a member of that group. It's something we have not done yet, something we might do. But it's a, it is a league of ag arenas. You have to pay to be an annual fee. They will analyze your dirt as a part of your membership fee.
Well, and, and I guess you just hit on one of my concerns is Clemson facility is an ag facility, correct?
Not, well, no. It, it's, it's our facility. It's a multipurpose facility.
Well, I mean, I guess my question is, are we going to be able to run motorcycles on there?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I know y'all have got motocross.
No, I mean, and, and we talked to.
Is that something that's going to have to change, or?
So the, our motocross guy says, whatever surface you've got in the building is what I work with. And, and Fletcher is very similar. We looked at their mix. He does the same thing at Fletcher. Will he push it around? Yeah. Will he mound it up? Yeah. But it doesn't have to come out. The Clemson deal, to answer your question, yes, he, he'll have multiple horse events. But the link I sent Stephen yesterday, I was on his calendar, he's got, I don't know, five or six horse events. But the one that's most pressing is a national antique vintage Americana group trade show that, that goes from arena to arena around the country. And there is none in the state of Virginia right now. None. that goes from arena to arena around the country. And there is none in the state of Virginia right now. None. So, there's one in Greensboro, there's one in Raleigh, but there is not a single site in the state of Virginia. So I've already sent that group an email. What does it cost, you know, to get you in? Are you looking at other venues, that type deal? But it's a three-day, Martha can come in and buy wreaths for the wall and decorations and they gear it up towards the seasons. And the ones at Clemson is coming up in a few weeks. I think it's actually the same time as our state fair and I'm not going to be able to go down there. But I sent Stephen a link. I sent one of our board members a link. I'm going to try to go to one of the ones they have in the Carolinas just to see how big it is. But they just take up the whole floor space. I mean, that's, and so if you look at where they're at, they're in every type of venue around. It's not a huge Greensburg, Coliseum-type deal. It's more of a, well, they're at the North Carolina State Fairgrounds is where they're going to be set up. They're at this Clemson facility. So, he will do that on dirt. He won't cover the dirt. In his case, we've talked about covering the dirt at times when we want to. But they have the graduation formal dance at Clemson in his facility and it's on dirt. So he compacts it, he presses it, he rolls it, he waters it. And his comment to us when we were there last year was, "I'll have a senior college girl go across that floor on a four-inch hill and she won't know the difference." But he's good. He knows what he's doing. He's gotten good at it.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I just had one more quick comment or I guess a question. And we've discussed it a couple of times, but the sign. Where are we at with the sign? Have we?
That would be outside of, yeah, that would be outside of the authority's purview too. Unless there's no sign there.
That's in part of.
That's in that list, yeah.
And that's why you mentioned the project status and where we stand on that, where we go with. Do we look at pricing a sign to go on the end of the building of all right now? Do we look at pricing a sign without a display board just to go down along the interstate that just says, you know, Apex Center on it right now? Mr. Hale talking about getting the signs through VDOT along the interstate, like you got Burgland Center, Salem City Center, things like that to go through there in the process. And that all goes into also part of the discussion of marketing. How, the criticalness of how much money you put in towards a large sign or do you put some smaller directional signs in right now? And do you put that into advertising? An example I use is I have never been to the Harvester Center in Rockingham. But I constantly hear that on the radio where, who's coming? I meant Charlie Daniels come in there a few months ago and play. Because of their, and that's one of my questions. I've been talking to the authority and someone about, how, how much money do we put in towards the sign? How much money do we need to have to go in towards advertising the venue? Because it's not as much going to be, oh, I'm driving by and see the sign here, go to it. But how much is it us advertising throughout the area that there are events going on there? Joe's talking about the coal field areas and all of that. Those are the people you've got to attract from a wide range coming to our facility to fill it. We, we put out proposals and that's, you know, a long time back and that's where we need to decide on a range of what we're wanting to put up there. Because if we go for the full-fledged thing, it's going to cost us seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars. And it's one of the things we've talked about putting in for a grant as well, which is going to be difficult to get. That's one of the things we've talked about applying for a grant.
To answer Ryan's question, one of the things I proposed to Stephen, because we need, we need advertising in December, January. We may need to go to the private sector and rent some big road signs until these others can happen. In other words, people like put those signs up, you know, that we, you see black ones that says, "Rent me." One on Seventy-Seven, somewhere in Blaine County or even in Merker County. With County folks are never going to pay for this thing. It's been an economic development project from day one and then it got sort of took over by the chairman and the building committee. But it's still an economic development project and that's where our base funding's coming from with the tourism part, correct? So although during the construction process, the construction committee's been dealing with it, I would think that the board would revert it back to an economic development. Because when he's talking about three and four-day events or two-day events, that's where our real payback comes from, is that extra tax for meals and people coming here. Goes back to the level of commandment, fifty, eighty dollars. You know, get people off the interstate, get some of their money, give them a good experience. And there's a big difference in economic development and industrial development. Economic development can start a payback the first year it's open. Industrial development takes four to five years to start paying you back. And they're similar in the way we look at it, but they're different in the way you make it happen and what the payback is.
Yeah, I understand all of that. I guess what I said a few months ago, I will vote for what it takes to get this open and to be successful. Some things we need more now, some things we, you know, we need, like the cattle yards, but might not need it right now. The signage is right up there at the top for me.
Yep. And I would, you know, you all know that some of the fence has been donated, that you know that your bid on the bleachers was substantially less. I don't know if that supplier has a sign. But I would, knowing the volume of material that that man has, I would at least inquire as to if he has a sign.
He's told us that he has a sign and he would give us.
If y'all, just, you all should meet him just because it's a life-changing experience. If the man has anything, he has raw steel and components from all these tracks. So, would he have the sign that maybe everybody wants? I don't know. But does he have signs? I'm sure he does on every possible level. And I think right now, Joe had inquired as to what his status was. We anticipate him being in here next week. So something we could certainly talk to him about is what he might have as far as signage. But, or October first, his timeline is October first.
And if he's got multiple signs, maybe we'd inquire about not only a large sign, but some smaller directional signs as well.
You know, to basically tell y'all what he does is he just, he disassembles structures, whether that's a NASCAR track or something similar. And I'm sure he is paid to disassemble and that facility doesn't care what he does with the materials when he leaves. So, anything he resales at that point is a profit, which is why, you know, the markup for him is automatic. So he's, he's interested in moving anything that he's got surplus to anywhere he's got it surplus to. And he's got it surplus all over the country. Any other questions for me or Buddy or anything else we could answer for y'all?
I guess, Matthew, I'll ask a question along the lines of what she thought. We know that we've got about eight hundred thousand dollars in fund budgets. We've got about one point six million dollars in wants and needs and that we know we can't do all at the same time. We know that we're not going to be turning enough of a profit the first two or three years that you're going to have eighty thousand dollars to be buying panels in the process. But in, where they rank, is it critical to go ahead and proceed with purchasing the panels? And I mean, I know I'm asking an impossible question of ranking the panels above the sign and everything else in the process. And the second part of that question is, is the number, the correct number, ninety? I think Buddy and I think your authority answered yesterday that is the right number. But I think it'd be helpful for the board to hear that.
Yeah, so as far as the volume, what we said is, is the number of ninety is going to cap just about any event that you would want to have. So, none of us can anticipate a sale which would require substantially more pins than that. So to put that in perspective, if you said two animals to a pin, you're talking a hundred and eighty animals. Well, the bull sale that grosses half a million typically sells around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty. So ninety's going to work. If it's a production sale, Buddy, if it's a breed association sale, typically you're looking at what they would call seventy to eighty lots. Some of those lots could have technically two head to a lot. But even at that point, if you said seventy lots, each lot got a pin, you're at ninety pins. So you've, you've gone above what would, so I guess to your point, Stephen, I don't anticipate coming back and saying, "Well, gosh, y'all purchased ninety pins, but we really needed a hundred and eighty." We don't foresee that as a situation. You'd agree with that, wouldn't you?
No, certainly. Eighty pins at Washington County. I did my best to fill them all up, but I don't always, we have occasionally had to get a few extra. So I feel like ninety is pretty much the perfect amount.
Yeah, I don't think any of us see events there that would require many more than that. To Stephen's old question, in the ranking, you know, I don't know that we've gone through and prioritized. What I can say is you won't do an animal sale there without pins. This is not going to happen. So you're not going to get the March Bull Sale. If we can swing that one away from across the road, that won't happen without pins. Buddy won't have a sale there. We've lost three sales this fall. And I shouldn't say we've lost. That's a combination of the building's not quite done and people didn't want to have the confidence to say the pins would be there or not. So they went to another venue. But there were three opportunities. Buddy's sale would be one, actually four. There were four opportunities that could have been there between late October and middle November that if you looked at 2019 and would say, "Well, the pins are there," that's, then you would hope that all four of those would be there. All four of those are happening in With County. They're just not happening at our, our location. Because they didn't feel like, they weren't confident enough that it would be ready to host it and they weren't confident enough they'd have pins. And we can't do it without a pin. So, I don't know where it ranks, Stephen. I mean, obviously signage is a huge expense. I think as far as, the one thing I'll say, what you all kind of budgeted, the bid came in substantially lower than what was budgeted and it was substantially lower than the competitors' bids. I don't think if the authority tries to buy them six months from now, I don't think we'll get any better deal than what's in front of y'all right now. I will say that. I don't think it's going to, I don't think at any time in the next two years, you'll have a cheaper price in front of you than what you got. I'll say that. And I don't know if the bids are turned down. I have no idea of no one, if the same entities will rebid it again or not. I don't know. But I do think the price that's in front of y'all is a, nothing's a good deal when you're talking about spending eighty thousand dollars. But the price per, you've got less, if you said ninety pins, to give you all some point of reference. We looked at horse stalls well over two years ago and metal has obviously gone up since then. But we had a galvanized constructor from Chatham, Virginia coming here and set up his stall, which was it ten by ten or ten by twelve? It's close.
I think it's ten by twelve.
I think it was a ten by twelve. Little more metal in it, a little more weight in it. His stall, his cost to build that, and granted, this is not exactly the same thing, but his cost to build that was eleven hundred dollars a stall. So if you had bid ninety of those at that time, you were well at a hundred thousand. That didn't include the sale ring. It doesn't include those alleyways. And ironically enough, that individual did not bid this project and I had thought that he was going to. So I had reached out to him and asked him to bid it and he was, he had all the specs and was very aware of it and he did not bid it unfortunately. I think the more bids you get, the better off you are. But he did not bid it.
Okay, has anybody else got any other questions?
I would just, you asked if it's a want or a need, basically, would do that.
Well, I understand it's a need. I just don't know if it's a need over other items just yet with the budget kind of. I understand the need.
To me, it's a need and to me, it's a need more than the sign is. Because if you don't have these, you can't have events. So you can advertise that you're having a bull sale there, but if you ain't got the facility to have it, you still can't have it.
Right.
And I'm going to comment on that. I agree that signage is needed. But most everybody has GPS now and they'll put in a address and it'll send you there. I think we also need to concentrate on advertising to let people know that we're here and what we're going to be doing. Well, and what you just said, advertising, you know, you can't ride around without hearing what's going on at the Harvester Center. I mean, they're always on the radio. Last I checked, that's not cheap.
If you don't have the equipment there to have the sale, you're not going to have anything to advertise.
What's SMG's projected, how they are going to market?
Oh, they'll do all of the above. I mean, it'll be print, it'll be, I won't say television, but it'll be certainly media outlets. And then a big push would be web exposure. And I'll be honest, we've, you know, that's.
That's figured in their budget, right?
As far as marketing, yeah. So I mean, we need, we need web exposure. I look at the Harvester dates all the time trying to find events that are going on. And they are on the radio quite a bit and they've got a very good website. It's updated, it's very informative. You can purchase all your tickets through that.
Our center has learned to get a lot of free TV advertising. I watch more news out of Long Island. And without an advertisement, those people on the panel, they're always talking about what's going on at the Harvester Center. It's not a paid advertisement.
Well, you know, we've got local radio here, obviously. It's not going to reach as much as some, but, and there are opportunities to get free television. Two or three of the local networks, Fox and Channel Seven, both now feature a morning. It's typically geared towards agriculture, but it's a morning feature story and it doesn't cost anything. They're looking for stories for that all the time. And so if there is something like a sale going on or an event or a rodeo or something, I think there's probably a better than fifty-fifty chance they would feature that on that early morning feature just because they need the stories.
Matthew, they might not be aware, but did, did you get a copy of Jane's article in the Virginia Maryland Agriculture Magazine?
I haven't got a copy of her most recent one. I don't get that magazine, but she usually sends me one.
It's been advertised up and down Maryland and the eastern shore multiple times because we have a local writer that writes for that thing. And this last time, her editor called her and said, "I want to know what's going on at the Apex Center. I need an article about it." So it's not just local advertising. There's been a lot of media advertising done away from here about it. And I think that's good because it begins to work in people's heads. There must be something going on out there.
Well, it's very, I guess it's ironic, Joe, that most of the calls to use the facility, with the exception of the sales, and two of them are outside of this county. But with the exception of the sales, all of the calls to use to rent the facility have come out of our county, several out of our state. And you say, "Well, how are those people aware of the project?" You know, word travels. But the motorcycle promoter, the inquiry from the monster truck inquiry, and I don't know that we're going to be accommodating him because of his timeline, but hopefully we can get him in there at a later venue. He wants an early November date and it's going to push it. But the motorcycle, all of the rodeo promoters, all of the road, the high school rodeo, other groups are from outside of this county. They're all, they're all the way from here. Nobody's, you know, it's all outside interest looking at bringing events here. Any other questions for me?
Anything else from Matthew?
No, as always, thank y'all. Our next meeting's Thursday, six o'clock. If any of y'all want to come, you're always welcome. And then our plan is to meet and then have somewhat of a discussion about where we're at on completion on some other items.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to proceed with the livestock panel.
I would make the motion, we accept the bid and proceed with it.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any more discussion? I know we should get discussed it a lot, so. it a lot, so. If anybody has any other questions, not, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes. Okay. Uh, next item, Tobacco Commission Agribusiness Grant.
We have discussed that, uh, in the conversation here, Mr. Chairman, but basically, um, the previous recommendation was putting in for the agricultural barn facility, uh, to host lots of different sales and things like that within that facility as well. Uh, I will be the, um, next week, uh, with, uh, our grant coordinator and with the representative of the Tobacco Commission on it. So just keep you all informed on it. Um, as Southwest Virginia Economic Development grant dates ever is established, then we can look at any of our grant requests for the, the sign that we talked about.
Um, I know our, uh, when's the grant due end?
October eighteenth is the Agribusiness.
Agribusiness, and they do meet in January. And I will remind everybody that it is their twentieth anniversary. Uh, the Tobacco Commission is gonna have, um, a reception, uh, and, um, suggest that, uh, and everybody, you know, they're, uh, requesting everybody that, uh, they've helped in the tobacco regions to, to make a point to try to attend the reception. Uh, and it's in January. Did the, did the announcer where we're gonna be at?
I'm not certain.
And hopefully when, uh, you know, I don't know where I talked to Stephen about this, when we get this facility up, uh, running, uh, and the meeting rooms and stuff is, they invite the Tobacco Commission here, uh, to have a meeting, have one of their meetings. Floyd, I mean, uh, what did he call it?
Echo Village, Echo Floyd Center on Echo Village Drive.
Uh, it was a nice, uh, a pretty nice facility. Uh, it wasn't as big as what we've got, but I think, um, you know, we, I think Tobacco Commission, they have donated at least a million dollars to the facility, uh, to have them here and, and host them here. I think it, it would be a, a real good idea. And, uh, I would request, uh, just as soon as we get all this stuff together, uh, Try, Matthew, and, and now I'd like to get a, kind of a little presentation, put on a, a, a jump drive, uh, and, uh, together. And, uh, I'm gonna try to get around to, to get a list of the Agribusiness committee members and go around and, and present, uh, a package to each one of them and talk to them. And hopefully we'll get some good news from, uh, Sarah Cargener and, uh, the staff, uh, on support of this. I mean, it's, it's hard for them. I know that's, they've, uh, filed us a little bit on this facility, but, uh, we've, we've done well with them. Okay?
Next item I've got, Mr. Chairman, is on the Apex Budget Status, um, Budget Review. Um, in front of you are a few change orders. Uh, Mr. Vaughn had a meeting yesterday with, um, the contractor, and several of these came in, I think after five o'clock last night on some of these change order recommendations. And I'd like to do these, cause these are known, and then go into the board package, a little bit of our discussion. The first one, I'll start with memo, um, Request Proposal Number Seventeen, additional snow guards. Bill, I'll let you come on up to the podium here, uh, and discuss any of these. Basically, the, um, currently the design only had snow guards above the entrances of the, uh, sidewalk coming in. So the main door, front doors, they only had snow guards above them. Um, and they placed them actually a little wider than even what was called for there. But their recommendation is to go ahead and install an additional four hundred and forty linear foot of snow guard all the way around the facility. That helps protect the sidewalk from the fall off. It helps protect the gutters, and it also helps protect the, uh, HVAC equipment that sits underneath it. Do you leave anything out, Bill?
No, that's it. Uh, you don't wanna lose your gutters this winter. You're gonna need to complete the snow guards.
I guess this is something we overlooked in the plan. It should've been in the plans to begin with.
What type of snow guards are they installing?
A bar.
Bar.
I, I'd like to recommend, Bill, that four hundred and forty feet just takes care of that lower roof.
Yeah, they're only putting on the lower roof.
Well, guys, that is just not smart. I'd, I'd like to take this whole thing and, and go back and get another price. Our, our, we got gutter at the top roof also. They totally ignored that one. And if we're worried about the lower gutter, why are we not worried about the top gutter, where the windows are? When we have all that snow sliding off that top roof, increasing the load on the lower roof, we got a bigger problem than gutters. So we need to rethink this thing. That, that's just a Band-Aid on the part that you can see and keep it off the sidewalk. The real problem for me is we got two hundred and ten foot span of high roof, and there's no snow guards up there.
Do you think, do you think there's a need for the snow guards on the lower roof?
If I had one or the other, I'd rather have the snow guards on the high roof than the low roof. Because if that snow on that two hundred and ten foot span, half of that, if that snow slides off, it's gonna hit on our roof below where we did not beef up the structure. The ti- the high roof is beefed up. The shed roofs are not beefed up. But you remember when we had that discussion with the lane group about the drifting snow part of the code, that, that that could be a snow drift on that building? Well, we're looking at putting snow guards to protect the sidewalk and the gutter. We're only looking at four hundred feet of it. We really need six hundred feet on the high roof, and evidently four hundred feet on the lower roof, 'cause that's what was left out by Lane. And then it's not worth, in my opinion, ten dollars to put, to put it up there. I'd ask for a breakdown for the material. It is a bar, and that's the best one for that roof. These little plastic things like we've got here don't work real well.
Uh, they're not under a, a, a timeline to get this, I mean, they have a little time to, to get this done?
Obviously, sooner is better because there, there are substantial complacions this week. This is an add-on, so it's an additional one.
Well, what I'm saying, if we have a construction committee meeting and bring our GM up and, and, and discuss this with them-
Another week wouldn't hurt.
And bring it, and bring it up to the next-
And this thing about quantity is, is an engineering question, not a builder question. Uh, we, we got county engineer here, uh, and, and you're input. I mean, just think about it. If, if we're gonna do the lower roof-
Well, I agree with you. I mean, you get all that snow sliding off at the, the bigger roof, onto the, onto the lower roof, I think we are gonna have problems. And it's gonna tear all the guttering off the, the upper roof.
And that would be the good thing that could happen.
That'd be the least expensive thing that could happen.
You want to refer this to committee then, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Obviously, that was an omission instead of an error by the architect.
Next item.
And, well, I just wanna say, and Bill, get with them, and, you know, when we have the meeting, they need to have-
A breakout.
A breakout of, uh-
Yeah, I'm sure. 'Cause right now, you can't refer it back in the, uh, in the schedule of values because this building, building metal system was all one lump sum. The roof was all lump sum. So it's kinda like Ragu, it's in there. So we need a detailed breakout.
Well, yeah. How about ask them for a detail on the attachment and how, how often they're gonna attach? That bar, the bar is a great idea because we know it holds that blanket up there. But it's no better than the attachment. When it loads up thirty tons of snow, you don't wanna be depending on some number nine screws holding.
Next item that I've got is, uh, the RFP Number Nineteen Exhaust Vent Covers. Uh, these prices have not been reviewed by committee, not been reviewed by myself. I don't know how much time Bill had to go over them yesterday. Um, this is the, uh, twenty-four inch exhaust system that was donated, um, and installed. We have to put a, um, cover on the inside wall, a cover on the outside wall. Bill, I'll let you go over these prices. No, you don't have a-
Well, don't make him move too much. I think he's having back problems.
Yeah, he's, yeah. Swinging through the doctor again this morning. Um, yeah, first price on here, and I had, when I got to me, they didn't highlight it to make sure. 'Cause I first looked at it, I thought they were talking about both, but they were, they separated them. On the outside, on the arena with the non-slip surface, they're asking, uh, it's twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars for the cover on the outside. And, uh, that would be non-slip. It's gonna have to have a gasket in it 'cause we don't want water getting back in that pipe and coming back into the arena floor. And the next one, they want, uh, they've bid forty-five hundred and twenty-four dollars for the inside arena, which is stainless steel, which matches the framework that was already put in on the inside.
Do we need stainless steel on the inside?
That's what I'm saying. I thought, I thought we talked about this and asked, you know, for painted.
We did. We talked about it. Put aluminum in there. The lighter, the better. Uh, we could go back to them and say, since they're the same size, say, give me two at the twelve thirty-five and we'll just-
And I asked, you know, I thought, you know, they're supposed to give us a price on aluminum.
Well, if you look at that item three down there, it says, "Ask for prints approved by David Shanks." Did David give them a drawing, how to build it and?
Just the dimensions, channel size, that type thing. He didn't specify material. So-
Why the price difference between the inside and the outside? Is the outside one a lot, or inside a lot more complex?
They're on painted steel on the inside and stainless steel, or painted steel on the outside.
Is this the exhaust system for-
Tractor pulls.
Tractor pulls.
Without a recommendation, I think we would present to Apex Committee and go back and work on it. It's critical to get this one in as quickly as possible, but like I said, he just got this last night with, with the prices on it. Um, and I don't think it's meeting what we're looking for. I think if we have some direction here, if you wanna look at the painted steel on both of them, I think it's what we need to look at.
Yeah, and I mean, even, I mean, aluminum is cheaper than stainless steel.
Is the exterior one more critical at this time than the interior?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, and that's water in.
Could we proceed with the exterior and get more direction on the interior?
Well, I still think we need to, we don't need the old stainless steel on the exterior.
For forty-two hundred dollars, you're gonna be able to get a piece of artwork.
Yeah.
The exterior is not stainless steel. The exterior is stainless steel.
I vote for them, Brad.
Yeah, the, the critical thing on the exterior is the anti-slip surface because this, this is in the sidewalk.
And he's got, it's steel, and he's got black rhino coated, so it's not, it's got an anti-slip surface on it.
And it's gonna have a gasket.
Yes.
Do you wanna make a recommendation for the outside one, and then we'll negotiate the inside one, what can do that?
I'll make a recommendation.
Make a motion to approve this?
To approve the request for the exterior one and continue to work on the interior.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other question or discussion?
Could, could we not save money if we got aluminum for the outside? 'Cause we're gonna ask for aluminum on the inside, correct?
Well, we can, uh-
Or price.
Price it with steel and have them to price it with aluminum and, and see if we come back with a better, a better price.
Well, being in that sidewalk, if you go with thin aluminum, it's gonna have to have a strut for stiffener in it.
Right, so it'll be strong enough?
It won't be strong enough to span it without a stiffener. Steel with the rhino coating on it will, will be the right thing. If somebody's up there with a forklift or a truck and you put it over aluminum, you're gonna get it warped. I'd, I'd rather have steel because it's horizontal in the sidewalk. The other one is vertical in a wall.
So is it sticking out the building?
No, it's in the sidewalk.
It's flush, it's on the ground, flush on the sidewalk. You can stand on it.
And you'd be able to run over it.
Gotcha. I was-
See, their elbow will hiss to that.
I think, that made, that makes sense. I was thinking-
The one inside is-
Stick it out the building. Okay, yeah.
The one inside is.
Why isn't it out through the sidewalk and not just out through the wall?
It's underground.
It came over and where it came up. And the problem is, in trying to go out even farther and come up not in the side, we would still be putting a cover on it, whether it's in the sidewalk, whether it's, it's buried, comes out of the ground, turns up, and has to have a cover on it. It's, it's in the sidewalk area because that was the place where they could put it without getting into the existing storm system drains and water lines and everything else that were already out.
And, and for the, uh, the flow of air, the gentleman that has consulted on this for the actual exhaust system, he can stand ninety degree total turns. So forty-five on the inside or forty-five on the outside. We went straight through the building, right out the arena wall, right to the outside, put the ninety degree turn. By the time you make the ninety degree turn out of the building, the placement in the sidewalk. It could've been a little bit towards the building from the sidewalk, but it just makes sense to put the whole thing structurally in the middle of the sidewalk. So we had about five feet to work with there. And everything that he said, all the other utilities were just past the sidewalk, so it was really the only clear space to put it in.
In my mind, I don't see what we're doing, so.
Well, you're pulling air out of the building to a-
Yeah, I know, we're pulling, pulling air out. This is the rain floor. This is the rain wall. Four foot. This thing comes out right here, flush with the wall, runs underground all the way over here. This is the building wall. Right here.
So how does this, how does this interior hook to the, is it hooked to something, or did they pull an air?
They, they take a big dryer vent-
And hook to the-
And hook to the sled. And then the sled has a vent that runs over top of the tractor. And so when they pull, this, this vent just snakes along the ground on the inside, and outside, there's a tractor trailer sitting on this thing with great big fans that's sucking all of the air out, so it pulls all the exhaust out from the tractors and- And he has like a male adapter that kinda slides in there off just about the same size. And believe it or not, he says all he connects it with is duct tape. He wraps it up with duct tape for the vent.
I was, I was thinking it was something that would be more like hanging from the ceiling than just-
No. It's mostly for those high horsepower tractors.
Well, I know, but I-
You got new Hollands, you all.
Yeah, I got new Hollands. I have one. If you don't believe me, come watch me chop corn. I ain't got no high, high, high horsepower.
And, Mr. Horni, I had no idea what they were talking about earlier, and I had to watch it on video to see. But they've got, basically on the sled, it's got-
Well, I've, I've seen, I've seen all that, but I mean, I always thought when it came off the back that it just went up to a pipe that was hanging from the ceiling, I guess.
No, I watched the same thing. I watched on, uh-
And I was trying to think.
I watched it on, uh, ESPN or somewhere. They had a, a, a truck and tractor pull, and they had it hooked to, through a wall, and had the hose on the ground, and it was hooked to the sled. And then they had this thing that run over the exhaust of the, a tractor. And, uh, there wasn't no exhaust inside the building. And I pulled it all outside.
Well, I think that exhaust is-
Yeah, make sure you watch the video where the tube comes and, uh-
For, for the record, Gene, for the record, this is the only cost that we're gonna have in it, is these cover plates.
And everything else is-
Everything else, including installation, was donated.
The frames and the cover.
That's the only thing we're paying for.
Cost, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I was looking for overhead, and I couldn't figure out why it was coming out of the room.
We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Uh.
All right.
Uh.
Uh.
Chair would say. Okay, next.
Next is the sidewalk extension. Okay, for whatever reason, if you look at the sheet C one oh one on the lane group and the other sheets that go on with it, on the southwest corner of the building, there's no sidewalk. It wasn't on the drawings. So, uh, it had, so it just makes sense to complete the sidewalk on both sides so they pretty much match. You got a uniform sidewalk pattern. And the, uh, the at-grade handicap sidewalks that we're gonna put in two will tie in at this location on that side. So it was a mission on the drawings. Uh, people will be walking down from the upper parking out the-
People will be walking down from the upper parking out the grass field at times. There'll probably be a little, little path we'll put there eventually. Or if they're on the little, on the road, they're gonna step up on the sidewalk right there. It won't be a sidewalk till you get to the first ticket booth if we don't do this. And I gave you a picture in there to kinda show you where I was talking about.
You mean?
On that building.
You mean on the front of the building, the sidewalk didn't go all the way to the end of it?
On the ticket booth side.
Parking lot area and all that, but it did not run all the way to the east.
Yep.
I didn't believe it. I went and pulled a whole set of plans. I'm like, it gotta be looking at that wrong. No, it, it, it did not have the sidewalk long through there.
Whose fault is that?
Engineering.
We prefer to say architect.
Yeah, architect.
And we didn't catch it in the drawings?
Well, we were so distracted with the big issues that some of these little things. And Bill, I didn't see any truncated entrances for the handicap, surely.
Yeah, they are. The two in front of the ticket booths are, they come right down to the handicap parking area.
But where are they? In the back?
There are any.
There's only one.
Right. One on the backside.
Will there be any in this sidewalk?
Uh, no, because this one right here already is.
Nine thousand six ninety-one.
So just to make sure I understand the picture, we're going with the thinner, the same size as it is on the side there?
Yeah, it'll be the same width as the existing sidewalk.
Yeah, if, if you, if you look at it in plan when it's all done, it's gonna look just like the opposite side on the north side, so.
That, that blue line just says that, that's just showing the distance of it.
Gotcha.
The area that. Now they're not gonna decrease the width. How close is it? Is that something that, uh, we want to take back to the construction committee and see if we can negotiate down, that down a little bit? How close are they wanting to, when are they pouring?
Just about done with all, well, they're, they're there now. We're about done. The only thing we got after this for concrete work is the propane gas tank pad. So we're at the end of the concrete work, yeah.
My, my concern is if they, in the proposal, they put stamped to match. And here a couple of months ago, that was a quote-unquote donation that they were gonna stamp. And now it's listed. And I understand that, but. I agree with Mr. McRoberts. That sounds a little steep.
Well, they're, are they saying there in that proposal, they're charging you for stamping it, or is that just a classification of the match?
I would think it's just a match, yeah.
Yeah. But you, you can break that down, Mr. Vaughn. What are they paying for concrete? It's a slip form. There's nothing unusual back. There's no ramp or anything, is it?
Nothing unusual back.
It's just, it either is a gouge or it's not a gouge.
What are you gonna make, you're gonna make a motion to up to, that's what I was getting ready to say, up to that amount and see if we can get it negotiated down further?
And not to exceed?
Not to exceed and see if we can get a better price. Uh, they have a motion. For that seventy-five feet extension of sidewalk at that price, to not exceed that price and see if we can get it negotiated down further.
Slow move.
They have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Here are none. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Motion passes. Okay, Rapier Ridge.
Well, I guess, well, if you wanted to come back to that one, let's just talk a little bit about this, um. That one's something to do with the Apex Center, that, uh, water, the one that Mike brought up last. Um, on the Apex Center, uh, like I said, we met yesterday with them. On page one sixty-six of your package is, uh, the budget status of, of currently of, of where we stand. The entrance road from Ready Mix Road to Apex, we had a long conversation about it yesterday. They are talking to the company, RGM, indicate their issue was, which I do not understand, that the company they're dealing with had a hard time meeting the specs. They said it was an old type spec that BDOT had on the thin sprain of the, it's all, ask my word, but, um.
Type D block seal? They're saying that nobody's doing that and they don't have equipment to do it.
Well, what threw us off, that's the same spec as what's on the parking lot.
Right.
That was done, so they were going back. Bill's going to look at the specs and talk to BDOT and confirm that, um, you know, that this is the standard that everyone is using to make certain there are no issues or concerns with the specs that we need to make revision there. Our main thing is we wanna get a prime and double seal up through there.
And, and they're only concerned about the block trip? Well, explain to them they were talking about taking a fertilizer truck loaded with sand and that's all you're really talking about.
Right.
I mean, I, I know part of the problem. These youngsters that got through university don't know the way we did things. Uh, that, they think there's some mystery here that aliens are gonna come and put a blotter on that thing. It's a matter of sand from the plant in a fertilizer truck, spreading some on that finished product so we don't track it in our building. Is that a fair analysis, Bill? There's no mystery to this. It's not a mix, it's not.
Well, it's, we, we, we didn't understand it. That's what they brought up, so Bill is working with them, but they indicate that was the problem that they were having getting the quote from the contractor.
Right, because the contractor don't ask, know what they're asking for with the BDOT language. If you explain it, just like I said to Bill, the problem will go away.
So they're working on that. We talked to Mr., uh, Milton yesterday. And the soil up there, the, the sand, we were talking about the mix, I was Matthew on the phone on that. Obviously, depending on how much sand is in this soil, how much sand will have to break in. Obviously, we know we're in close proximity to sand. But the additional material, he understands that we can't do any work on the lower road or parking lot until he gets all of the dirt, excess material that he has spread and, uh, leveled down there in the process.
And compacted, and, and compacted.
And compacted, yeah, and compacted. But we did go over what our plans are there, what we're working on. He understands the timeframes that we are working on there. What I'd like to do is, it's hard for us to go out and get quotes on that until we get the area, the dirt all down and finalize and package it in place. To have the contractor come in and bid what it would take to come in and put the, uh, the gravel and the prime and seal on that area going down the hill. But Bill has all of that ready, uh, technically. We know what specs we need. As soon as we are able to put that out and get proposals on, we will be doing so, so we can have that lower parking lot and hill taken care of.
What would be done about gravel in the back? Is that a done deal? We're gonna do that?
The gravel on the back, we'll be looking at proceeding with that, yeah.
Because that's immediate relief, not just for parking. It's gonna keep our building a lot cleaner because we're not gonna get vegetation back there. Even with it raining every day, you can't get it planted. But if we put gravel back there. And then when, when there's funding for the next building, all you gotta do is either leave the place and dig your footer. Or, or take it up and use it on some repairs down the road. It's not stone waste.
I would like to have that change order for you at this meeting to go ahead and get all that approved, but, uh, I don't know that you've gotten everything lined up on it from RGM in the process.
Yeah, we've got everything from them for doing it. I'm just waiting on the bid to come from Jay O'Brien on the price for the stone.
Yeah, how much twenty-one A thickness are you talking about?
Four inches.
Compacted.
Yeah.
Compacted four.
Compacted four, yeah. So as soon as I get that, that last piece of paper, we can move out of there.
What do you have the price from RGM or what sort of thing to do that?
Yeah, they agreed to that, cause we did a proration. Remember, the original bid was for the grass upper parking lot. Then we said, well, while we're having our discussions with DEQ on stormwater, let's get the one at the, don't call them a barn area done. And I just did a quick measurement, did a proration and got Larry Edwards, who's doing their, their checking stuff, he agreed to my number for, it's forty-seven percent of the original. Lisa said yesterday they agreed to it, so they're ready to go with whatever forty-seven percent is times their, what their bid number was. We'll get the gravel PO in and start working then.
And we probably, we'll probably get a good price on sand through them too.
It, uh, the last time we, last time we bought the twenty-one A from up there with Cory, delivered was twelve dollars and ten cents a ton. And from some documents I got, I was doing my market research, not delivered, last year they were charging commercially like twelve dollars and forty cent just for the material. So we're getting a good price and he comes back with the same price.
What was his price?
I'm expecting twelve dollars and ten cent delivered for the twenty-one A. That's what we paid last time.
Well, if Matthew's mix comes back, if we need some river sand. Bob Litten says their new price for river sand is four dollars and a half. And I can't really imagine that a river sand, and one of the things I think we ought to look at, if you talk to Jay, do you talk to him?
I'll be talking to him next Wednesday.
We don't really need to buy masonry sand. We could, we could use a reject from the sand plant to do, Matthew, are you still back there hiding behind a buddy?
Oh, listen to that very clearly. So the guy Clemson ju, uh, Joe only buys masonry sand when he's fine-tuning his mix.
Right.
And he only buys river sand when he's fine-tuning his mix. So his take was to buy neither out of the gate and only add it as it's needed. So I, I would say buy just mountain sand.
Well, the reject from the sand plant is probably exactly what we need.
Well, I know up, up above the thing, they used, they had washed the sand up there to get some of the clay out of. I don't know where they have any un, I mean, if it unwashed sand or not.
That'd be great.
If, you know, if they had unwashed sand, I don't know if they have any from down on lots gap that they bring up and run through the sand plant. If they washed that before.
Well, give us some guidance here on, once they get that spec in and once they determine what they need, um. We'll obviously go through procurement of, of making certain we, we've checked with him, but obviously I don't expect anybody's gonna beat the price of the local sand plant. Is that something we need, or you all are fine with us going ahead? Cause we've gotta have the arena floor in there with issuing those purchase orders and getting that brought in there to start the mix.
Matthew's construction. Can, can we bring that back to the construction committee? Cause we can get, get together anytime. But Matthew's gotta tell us what our sand is. We, we know what the Clemson sand is.
I understand all that. I'm just saying, I don't wanna have to wait two more weeks.
Right.
If, if we can do that. If everyone's in agreement that we need to go ahead and get a soil mix lined up, be going in there as soon as we're ready.
I, I really don't think the soil mix is gonna be a big deal.
But we still, we still got to pay for it.
Well, I mean, if, if there's not a lot to weaken it, there's not that much yardage. We figure one time it's four thousand yards will cover that thing.
But we have dirt that we, we need to get moved as soon as we get a, uh.
We need to finish the outside grading. That, so everything's got all out of, we gotta fill in the big pond hole number five. We gotta finish the outside grading around the building. There's a couple of manholes that need to be raised a little bit to accommodate the grading. And then we can get the stone down. We're done with the outside up there around the building.
Let me ask you a question. What's gonna happen between the sidewalk and the building?
There is nothing in the design plans, uh, going between there?
Not in it.
Well, we definitely gotta fill it. And now that sidewalk's in, can we fill it without damaging the sidewalk?
Yeah, you can just reach over the bucket and tip it over. Fill up with sand or.
Skid steer won't reach across that ten-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, are, are we gonna put landscaping there? Are you gonna put mulch in there? Are you gonna put the, the black cloth down so you keep the weeds out of it? We don't know what we're gonna do there yet, cause that really has.
Well, what, what, when are we gonna deal with that because? Okay.
RGM, I had that conversation with Lisa yesterday at the end of our meeting. And she asked if it would be acceptable for them to put a proposal of some landscaping in there for us to look at. And, uh, she asked how detailed we want to go. Do we want flowers and all these things? And I said, keep it simple, keep it low maintenance. That's the things we are looking for.
That's what I was saying.
And no red suits.
You don't want stuff flashing back up on the building. If you could put stone in there, it would be a whole lot less maintenance to it than you will put the mulch.
I think the landscape, I think putting landscaping in there and coming back with the river rock out of triple B stone would look the best. You don't have to worry about mulch. You don't have to worry about the fire hazard. You don't have to worry about, and the triple B stone color blends in well with the sidewalk and the building color. That would be that.
There's a method called Xercescaping where you do exactly like he said, and then what vegetation you put in there is low maintenance, low, low water. You don't have to take, do a lot of maintenance to it. It's easy to do.
I know we're getting down to the fine details now, so.
If you'll, and I'll get that response back from her. We'll look at that proposal with the committee and see if a recommendation comes forward here to work.
Well, could, could you go to some landscaping or let Matthew contact? Is, is, are u's the right answer? Not the four-legged kind, but there's a tree called a u that, that I think needs virtually no maintenance.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a list of plants that are low maintenance, low water requirement that you put in with the, the Xercescaping. You've heard of that before, right, Matthew?
Sure. I mean, what you all are talking about, I mean, yeah, I, I would say, I mean, Ryan brought up the thing about money. I would do the cheapest, lowest maintenance, least flash mud up on the side of Bill's job. I, I mean, we talked about, you know, if somebody donates some landscaping in, in exchange for advertising, but obviously you all know Bob's on our group. We joked around Bob, the pressure on lit landscaping, but I, I would say don't spend a lot of money on landscaping. That's, I would not, I would not do it. It's cheap.
Well, since we don't have any windows, stone is a great idea.
Use the word cheap. Will you hand him that microphone so we can get that?
I mean, yeah, I would keep, that would be the, of all the things, Ryan, you had about the stuff that we had on earlier, the landscaping looks great, but as far as the usability of the building, it will have zero impact. So I, I would just say keep it as.
It will come later.
Yeah.
We can't leave that hole that's out there now. It's about ten, twelve inches deep.
And if you went with landscaping, fabric and rock all the way down through there.
Right.
Right.
Color matches. You come back, move the rocks out of the way and plant your few bushes or me bushes or we bushes, whatever you want.
Yeah, at some other point in time.
Yep.
Um, I'll get that from, um, I'll see what Lisa's already proposing there to go with it and, uh, and talk to her about it. But keep it simple is the primary thing we're looking at. The gravel road at the very bottom will be the last thing done and, uh, all the work they've done in the last three weeks on the bottom has completely demolished the road that was down there before. And that's understandable during construction. They'll grade that bit back in, compact that back down, make sure we've got the, uh, good drainage ditch on the right side of it. The left side's got a whole wide, uh, system down from there, so that is gravel that we, we budgeted for. That's a pretty fixed cost. We know what we're gonna put in. One of the questions I've got is need guidance on exterior lighting. Mr. Hale has said, Bleacher Realms is gonna give us lights. We've heard that for a while. I've not seen anything from that. I just, I'm bringing it up because if we do open, we're getting into the darker part of the year, we don't have. I just, I'm bringing it up because if we do open, we're getting into the darker part of the year, we don't have, we've got outside lights on the building, and we've got lights in the parking lot. Uh, we have nothing over the lower hillside. We do have the AEP lights that provide a lot of light on the grass parking lot on the top. So, we're not completely in the dark, but does, does, do you want Bill to go out and start pricing about a ninety-foot pole with those lights, or having Bill go out and put lights all the way along that hillside that can shine down on the lower parking areas and, and shine up towards the, the gravel parking area where we're building?
If you go down there at night and look what that light does in the line J parking lot. He's told us he will provide three of those towers. State Electric has said they can put a brand-new ring, and all we gotta do is tell them what size the top of that pole is. That they can provide a Cadillac LED ring fixtures and everything for fifteen hundred dollars each. So, if, if you did one up there near that front southeast corner of the building, it would light that parking lot down there because of the topo elevation plus ninety feet. It's gonna make it a little hazardous for a helicopter buzzing the building, because it's gonna be higher than the building. But that would also take care of your handicap parking lot in front of the building.
Well, the handicap parking lot is already lit.
With holes?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can move that ninety-foot tower back there to the back corner about where the office trailers are, the temporary trailers. It's easy to get power to there, right? And then the other one go up in the middle of the other parking lot, and I think you'd have it lit. But it's gonna be easier next week, or when you, easier October, we, we'll have a list for him of priority of what we need now. And it may be for those towers, we may have to get a trailer and go get them.
Well, that's fine. I just, I'm making certain that...
The tower's where the money is.
And where those are. We can get them donated, that's a whole lot cheaper, it's a whole lot cheaper to put up two or three lights than it is trying to put holes all the way down.
And, and your line maintenance?
We'll wonder what the length of the, the sections are.
I think they're thirty foot. I'll find that out. We can go get them. This thing about how far it hangs over the rear end don't make a lot of difference.
Tie a red rag on it.
Put a light on it, go.
Well, you, you get, you see if you can get one and, and, uh, I'll come...
Now, we're gonna get as many as we can get.
Well, I don't know how many we can haul, what the weight is, but I'll, I'll agree to go get it.
Oh, that's four of them anyway.
If, if, I mean, if we can get those from him, that's great. I just, I just wanna make certain that everyone knows that's the route we're trying to go.
Well, I've been working with him because I've al- also put one in for the ball field at Max Meadows, if he's giving them to us.
Um, along those lines, is he giving, I know we talked about coming next week, but we still have not seen the engineer plans, if you had any...
I brought that up with him personally, and brought it up with Bob. Uh, Bob just come back from Branson, as you know. And Bob looked at the, the bombatory sizes out there in those public auditoriums that seat a whole lot more people. And he said they were eight feet. But I think engineering-wise, we're healthy and safe in ten to twelve feet. But you're gonna be happy with whatever his engineer says, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
'Cause we haven't been able to find an answer in the code. It's one of those architectural mathematical conundrums that you can't answer.
All right. That is, uh, that's where we are on the furniture. We have purchased the initial furniture, um, for the conference rooms and the offices. There will still need to be some file cabinets and things purchased for the offices. We have to be working with SNG, um, because the authority needs to start working with them on getting the copiers and the printers and the computers and all of those things that they will be needing, uh, for operations, determining what they're bringing in for operations. They're bringing their own laptops and just the network, access to the network. But they are going to be needing, uh, copier machines, those items in there. That will be the authority's responsibility to be getting those on.
As big as they are, they may have a national lease agreement with Creem or one of the others that they're just safe for this amount of money, we can put equipment in.
And it's critical for them to, to start, get this contract in place and to get their operating stuff in here, because there'll be a lot of items that the authority's going to have to be purchasing for operations for them to, to get started.
You wanna take this time, but let's talk about what you and I talked about and get board approval for that interior, putting up those huge flags.
Oh. Don't have any prices on anything. Yeah, go ahead, bring up your idea, what you're talking about.
Well, I asked somebody, a contractor that was here over the weekend. There's someone down in Tidewater that manufactures flags. I said, Bill, you may know of them. They're a national, international flag company, and they use little old ladies and don't pay them very much to make the flags. But if, if we hung a huge American flag between those two doors, on whichever end you want to, is our protocol which flag has to be east or west, I don't know. If you hung a huge flag about six inches off of that wall back there, while we've got equipment, that's gonna help the acoustics more than any one thing we can do. Like I was talking to Stephen, if you don't get that flag big enough, it's gonna look like a postage stamp if you put up a little flag on that huge wall.
I would say, uh, army classification, you're looking for a garrison flag, which is the one they put out for holidays, which is, almost hangs from the top of the pole to the bottom of the ground, it's so big.
Mm-hmm. Well, you see them at some of these car dealers, you wonder how the old stands the load.
Yeah.
And then maybe at the other end, put a state flag and a West County flag, 'cause how many people's ever seen a West County flag? There're not even one in here. Whoa, that...
I see one at Baco every year.
Is that one in the corner?
Yep.
Uh, those, and Bill's a good guy to handle that. Mr. Vaughn knows flag protocol. But those don't come cheap. I mean, I don't know whether a thousand dollars for a flag, or, 'cause a lot of yard goods goes in a flag that big.
Well, Mr. Vaughn can see what he can find on some flag options, and maybe, uh, Mr. Miller can cure one on his way back from a Hokey football game from a large car dealership, it's gotta be a flying.
Or call Woodman of the World.
I think that's too big.
I'm being recorded, just so you know.
Is it Woodman of the World that gives away flags?
I've been authorized.
And I'll tell you ones that provide flags, ca- call them in Omaha and ask them if they wanna give us a big flag.
Was there any possibility that a military base would donate a flag?
Only if they were gonna surplus it. Well, there's another, you might have a large garrison flag at Dermo somewhere being surplus, we're looking into.
They're not big on state flags, are they?
Maybe we can get one donate, state donate one.
What state would donate this, 'cause Jimmy don't even know we do.
Uh, the, um, the other item I had, the steps from the hillside, is that another item you're working with, uh, Mr. Jordan on?
Yep, uh, we've got a whole list of things with him, but the steps are on there, and it'd be short order for Mr. Vaughn to come up with the pedestal pors once we know how long its legs are. And it will have, I think it'll have landings, which makes it really good that we can come up there and then a rest landing, and then like they do at the NASCAR.
Thirsh step.
If, if we just put those together, it'd be a whole lot cheaper than pouring that many concrete steps. And we need at least two of them, but if we can get three, you know, you could use one coming down that bank to where this sidewalk doesn't exist. Somewhere mid, midway at that bank, one going down to the soccer field, because I believe that'll eventually be an overflow parking lot, or will actually...
The soccer field, to me, is the most critical location. The, the field at the bottom, if you drive down past the Apex Center, drive to the bottom, you can walk back up that slope to get to the main building. But for the soccer field, you've got to walk all the way around.
Or go vertical, like a goat.
I think that's gonna be the top priority.
We're looking at three steps, and we'll have to get any millennial measurement. And of course, I think we'll add ten percent in case we didn't measure right.
And, uh, obviously, we're gonna need some directional signage, but, um, Matthew and him as well. Up there now currently in the neighborhood where RGM has their construction sign right in there, do we wanna look at at least getting some type of sign right now that says Apex Center up there? I don't wanna, you know, I'll use our progress park entrance going into it. That was a forty-five thousand dollar project just for that entrance. I'm not recommending anything like that. I think we just need to have some sort of initial sign up there, a little bit fancier than a four by eight sheet of plywood, but paint it nicely, or, um, a sign from one of these banner companies around town that's mounted on something there and say the Apex Center, just, uh, the ones coming up through there. Is that something you want us getting prices on now, or, or not?
Are you talking about a, um, a five by eight, something like that?
Wouldn't hurt to get, to get prices and see what, a nice en, just a, a basic entrance sign would...
Uh, talking about flags, have we, is flag pole in the construction on, in front of the building?
Nope, no. And, and remember, because of the size of the building, so it's proportionally correct, it's gonna have to be a pretty big tall flag pole.
Yeah, Apex, Apex, that building.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be twenty footer like you got at your house.
That's something we can do later, but I'd, I'd like to see.
We can do that later, yeah. And lots of companies sell those.
And that would depend on where you put it. I mean, if you put it at the entrance with a little sign that says Apex Center, it doesn't have to be a huge sign with respect to the building, because you got that lower roof line right there, um, I mean, it's gonna be a, a good-sized flag pole, but it doesn't have to be a automotive dealership.
No, nothing that big, but it's gonna have to be proportioned correctly for the building, so it looks right.
Okay, you're going, is that all on Apex?
That, I, I just wanna get a little bit of guidance and direction, because, um, you know, we're a month and a half away from construction completion, uh, two months, a little less, two months away from that. Uh, and there's still a lot of outside work that, that we have to work on, so the committee will be meeting and having recommendations for the full board on it.
Uh, after yesterday's meeting, if I may, it looks like, 'cause you'll, you'll get the warm fuzzy, I know what you need. It looks like in the next week to ten days, that whole north gazebo is gonna be pretty much finished out from what they're telling us, which dovetails real well with the bleacher builder guy saying first of October's showing. 'Cause once they get that inside gallery cleaned up and that bleacher area cleaned up and sealed, that's about three days, he can start working on that and start installing the bleachers. So, it's really gonna look like things are coming together. So, everybody that's, that's turning two now on the north side is gonna just pick up and move to the other side and knock that out in about a week or two, so...
You, you, you used the word sealed again, but what context are we using the word sealed?
Concrete.
The concrete people say they've already sealed that.
Well, there's, they've gotta cut, they gotta put this, before they've done the construction.
The caulking, what you're caulking, okay, okay.
Caulking, yeah, yeah.
That's not done yet? I thought he was gonna have it done last week.
He's got it cut, but he hadn't done it yet. He's, he's waiting to clean the floors, 'cause there's still a lot of traffic going in there. It'll stay off of it for three days, so he does that last prep.
What, what's going with the chemical floor? Have you looked at it?
The, uh, in the, in the bathrooms?
Oxey.
Yeah, that's, um, that's gonna take about three or four days too, but they're about ready to do that too, from what they were telling us yesterday. And that's the one that's got the different color chips in it and all that?
It's got to have proper curing time.
Right.
That's what they said. That was, they said it'll have to cure three or four days before they come in and start putting fixtures on it, and what I understood him saying, they will be starting that this week.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying. First of next week, that whole north side should be fairly well into what I call true punch list status as they pick up and move to the other side. Uh, little eyes and ends that when you make one change, something else comes. For example, now that we've got cooking hoods in there with grills, the health department says we have to have a triple sink instead of a double sink now. And we're, we're looking around for the triple sink to, to fit. So, just little things keep, keep popping up that we're just addressing as we go.
Have they got the hood installed?
Yeah, the, the top part's on, they're still finishing the install on it, but for the most part, you can go in there and tell where the hood, it's in there. We had to drop that down two inches still within code, so we didn't have to move a whole lot of HVAC around. So, yeah, and they got up through the ceiling, the vent stacks in and all of that, so they'll, they'll put the parcel hood on the other side next. But, see, putting that hood in there generated a couple of other requirements in that room, the triple sink being one for health department. The other being that all the electrical is easy for Mr. Tally to do, that's gotta be on a shunt switch, so if you hit that red button, if you got a fire in the hood, it automatically trips every electrical outlet in that one room and cuts them off. So, that's a rewire, but he said it's easy to do. So, like I said, will you make one change here, or change B, change C kinda has to follow sometimes? So, but we're there.
That's all I have for the Apex, unless you all have any questions.
Raper Ridge, change order one.
This is, um, come about, I went up there, uh, before the storm, right over to take a look at it. Uh, and then following that, uh, this change order request came in, this contractor's moving along quickly, and if the water committee does not object to us moving ahead with this, um, you got a picture on the back of it there, about four pages back. They have cut out this entire circle, Bill, jump in anywhere here, basically. They've cut out this entire circle, they've got some unsuitable material on the, uh, south side there, and what they're wanting to do is cut out that unsuitable material and fill it back in with rock on it. Change order for five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, our engineer recommends approval of this. They're trying to get this thing finished as quickly as possible before weather hits. Water committee has no objections, I'd like to recommend an approval.
And it's in, within our existing budget. I entertain a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call, roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Okay. Mr. Vare, you have anything else?
No sir, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I pressed one.
Does any board member have anything to bring forward to the board at this time? Here none, we are adjourned.